Yes, okay. Uh, could everyone please join me to the place of business? Ready? We'll begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's no report, that was closed session, no action was taken. Yeah, motion do not be agenda.
Some who?
Say it. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Tonight we have three special re- uh, recognitions. The first one is the Festival of the Arts Foundation, Scott Moore and Darlene. That will be our presenter.
Thank you. Do we have more than Mr. Moore?
No, well, yeah.
Hi, glad to meet you.
Thanks.
Hi, just first, first of all, just wanted to say that, um, we are really happy and proud to, um, partner with Festival Arts Foundation and thanks for this very generous support of the Festival Foundation. We have had additional funding for all of our art classes at the high school. Our teachers are really appreciative. They asked me to share that with you tonight.
Thanks.
And they really rely on those funds to make the quality programs that they have. So, thank you so much for your support.
Thanks, we just thought we'd put a base to the money. I'm president of the foundation right now. I've been president for thirteen years and prior to that, president of Festival Arts and the pageant, the masters back then. We have a little extra money this year, so, um, with the brainchild of Bob Earl, who works on the Laguna Beach High School, Foundation, uh, social foundation. He suggested that we, uh, we, we add to our normal grants that we give to the separate classes, the separate disciplines this year, uh, a, uh, an annual scholarship that will continue throughout the years. So, we're putting thirty thousand dollars into the, into that fund. Jackie is our, our secretary and Bob is our treasurer. And, uh, we just really care a lot about the, the school system and, and we try to look at, um, what is being left out of the schools at times. And so, we, we give over twenty-five thousand to Loca, which comes into the schools, especially in the elementary schools. So, we try to start in the elementary schools and then we get them to the high school and we put five thousand dollars in each of the disciplines in the high school. And then the Festival Arts took over our, um, scholarship program in nine, about seven years ago. And they, as you know, give a lot of scholarships to the, the students going on to, uh, to college. And, uh, anyway, we're, we're proud to do it and, uh, we, uh, we, we enjoy the fact that we see a lot of the kids that are not kids anymore, that they're adults and then in the end of giving back to our community. I've been in the festival for thirty-eight years and Jackie's been there for seventy-five years. And, uh, and, and we used to be the kids over there. Now, we're looking at some of your students and now they're taking our places over there. And it's a wonderful continuing that we, uh, we enjoy. But anyway, thought we'd just say hi tonight and, uh, and, uh, and thanks for turning out some wonderful students.
Thank you for getting me back to our community and, and I just have to say, if it wasn't for Scott, I wouldn't have met my husband.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, so, thank you.
What do you want to thank you guys? You know, the public in Laguna Beach is so generous and, um, it's just an amazing community that supports arts, that supports music, that supports every kid who needs whatever in this community. And we're very, very mindful of the fact that we are exceptionally lucky to have the kind of public support we have. So, really thank you folks for the job.
Thanks, I mean, you had a couple of teachers here over the years. Mark Dressler, obviously, who, uh, was, was not very quiet about asking for anything and, uh, but was always very thankful. And Bill Barnell, who used to run the surrounding department. He's the one who really made sure that other teachers were asking for the grants and made sure that they filled out other forms and stuff. So, he, those two guys really kind of kept it going for a lot of the other teachers. And, and so, we have a pretty good group now that seems to continue to respond properly to, to our call. And, and we appreciate the press releases you guys put up too and I try to give the F A, uh, Foundation a little more credit. We separated from the festival, um, legally years ago, just to protect the fund. And, uh, I think we've been giving you guys a check for twenty-seven years. And so, uh, anyway, we just will keep doing it and we hope you guys keep doing what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next presentation is Laguna Beach Batty Cages for New Phil and his dean, I believe.
Yes, the board's in the audience, I'm happy to come up. I don't see him there. He, he, uh, he wanted to come before the board to kind of let you know kind of how things were going. You know, he serves the batty cages, he uses the batty cage. The agreement is up there for renewal. He did have, uh, um, he, just wanted to kind of let you know everything's going. When I had a discussion with him, but since he's not here, I'll go ahead and just say, you know, he's, he's had a great year. He loves what he's doing, he loves serving the kids in that way, wants it out there. And so, he's going to lay that, um, out there. He did, uh, want to, uh, you know, maybe sell batting gloves and things like that. And he always is first to come in and say, can we do this? Or can we do this if we do this here? So, he's been, uh, good on the property and, uh, so, might not have been making it tonight. But we'll go ahead and go to the next.
We thank him for the, for the contributions he's made this year.
And from our end, it's all going well. I mean, that's.
Yes.
Okay, our next presentation is the School Power Check presentation. Amy Kramer is going to do it. I think Shereen is going to speak.
Well, I'm not sure "school power" means any introduction. Amy, it's all yours. All right, well, hello. As you know, through our generous donors, School Power provides support for many programs through many avenues of funding, which we will be addressing at a future meeting. But tonight, we would like to talk to you about fund need. And this year's fund need was truly a heroic event. Our theme of the thirty-first annual dinner dance was calling all superheroes and this call was not lost on anyone. From the very beginning, working with Mike Morrison, Darlene Messinger, and our school principals and finding out how we could best address the needs of the district, to the very last closing call of the fund need auction, School Power's fund need was flat out super. Let's talk about the video. If you haven't seen the video, you have to see the video. And if you've seen it only once, you probably want to see it again, which you can by visiting lbsschoolpower.org, by the way. Thanks Andy Crisp and Jun Shen, Mike Morrison, and everyone who helped with the video. It really got things rolling. This video truly inspired and ignited the crowd to really consider what we needed to do to bring home the reimagined classroom and library. People laughed, listened, and at the end of it, they actually gave it a standing ovation. So, that was huge. They gave the funding, an extremely generous double match by the Wilson and Martini families, along with contributions from L B U S D. And School Power Endowment maximized the impact of each donation exponentially. All of this paired with one of the most enthusiastic crowds we have ever had for a fund need. We made a record of two-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand-fifty dollars. With all that said, now twelve classrooms instead of the original eleven and the Thurston Library will be reimagined with L C D displays, sound amplification, and flexible furniture. We are so pleased and honored to provide this contribution to Laguna Beach Unified School District. And we can't wait to see the students benefit from this great investment this fall. So. Wait just a minute. I lost some camera.
I can't even take one.
Can you move over a little bit so I can see you? We're attached to him.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
May I just say, on behalf of the Laguna Beach Unified School District, it is my pleasure to accept this check worth two-hundred, where's the camera? Two-hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars and oh-five-oh for.
Or fifty dollars, sorry.
Fifty dollars for the four yearly classrooms and the Thurston just the library. It, it was wonderful teamwork with School Power, Mike Morrison, Jen Shen, Andy Crisp, and the person who's a parent, I don't remember his name, Gray?
Gray.
I think Gray. Um, the amazing, uh, the amazing donations made by all of the people who were there and the Martini and Wilson families who really went above and beyond.
It was a great evening, yeah. It was a great evening and we're so excited about it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, every time we thank all of the organizations who contribute money, you know, again, we're very, very lucky that the money is there. Almost as important as that, I think, is the fact that all those people at P T A, School Power, School Power Endowment, private donors, are working in this community to put money in the public education, to show support in public education. And the, the work to raise the money helps to bring people together and make friends and create a community that is a wonderful thing in Laguna Beach. And relatively rare to start looking around, so we're very, very lucky. Our next section is.
It's been a long way from the fickle family circus.
All right, next session is public comment for items that are not on the agenda. I see Mr. Hoppy is in there.
My name is Bruce Hoppy, Chair of the County Garden Federation, established in nineteen fifty-three at Laguna Beach, California. I'm here this evening to discuss my proposal to Principal Herschel for a Visual Performing Arts Award. Sixty years ago, in Dade County, Florida, I established the, uh, Center Arts Award, the County Center Arts Award, and commissioned a sculpture dedicated to Apollo, the Greek god of theater in ancient Greece. That's going on since that time, based on criteria. We, uh, we established between the county schools and the art. Uh, in the spring, in the fall of last year, I proposed to Principal Herschel a Visual Performing Arts Honor. This will be conferred every year in the spring, recognize students who have distinguished the historic legacy of the performing and visual arts. He said we will work with his surrounding department of the high school to create that award. And, uh, I said we should have a meeting with Mark Dressler and Peter Tyer, the former leaders of that particular, uh, discipline in Laguna Beach. The last time I spoke to the school board, the day after, I received from the principal saying, we have too many awards, we don't need yours. And, uh, so, I'm addressing you this evening concerning that proposal, which explicitly is directed to you. I'm concerned because, uh, in the official proclamation dedicated to my foundation, working with the district school, I'm, uh, I'm recognized for my work within visual performing arts. And I'm a little bit disappointed that after we had gone through this and it was accepted and you actually showed me the surrounding award, what did you say, we had too many? Well, that's number one. Number two, I am a, I'm a, I'm a lifelong member of the, 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 uh, Journalism Education Association. And I oppose to the, uh, inviting of the Journalism Education Association. We have a special, have a special award, uh, dedicated to Investigative Journalism, which is a national award in the United States. He never replied to that. I also asked for a, I'll finish. I also asked for, uh, I'd like to, I'd like to have another type put in there on the values of the Greek, uh, work for the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, Investigative Journalism. He never replied that, or reported that to, uh, the principal and he said, uh, it's too bad, we don't need you. I don't understand it. I thank you for your courtesy. I still believe.
Thank you, Hoppy. Would anybody else like to comment on items not on the agenda? We'll move then to section eleven, the student representative reports. Your language, you got some points?
I do, so, uh, the month of May for L V, for L V H S is a lot of testing. Um, we have A P tests starting last week and going through this week. So, all the sophomores, juniors, and seniors are pretty stressed out. Maybe not the seniors, I mean, I think they're, they're starting to get out of it. May twenty-third through June eighth, we'll have a modified bell schedule because of CASP testing, which is for juniors, um, which is like the state tests. So, that would be, um, I think that it's different this year, but it's block periods, except for Wednesday, which we have periods one through six, like normal, um, bell scheduled day. Um, we have prom coming up on the twenty-first. Our theme is double oh-seven, so classy, you know, suits, ties, casinos. So, that's the whole spiel with that. Um, our pad assembly will be on Friday. Uh, we have some good ideas coming with that. Dylan Wolf and Kayla are working hard on the video, so we hope that all goes well. Tickets for prom are, at the moment, let me just pull it up. So, right now, they're, um, fifty-five with A S B and sixty-five without. And then on May sixteenth and seventeenth, they'll be sixty with, seventy without. And then every day after that, they'll be increasing five dollars respectively, with or without A S B. Um, our location, uh, as there is a huge complaint of the bell schedule or the date of prom and that triggered a lot of negative response. So, we changed our date to the twenty-first. So, we also had to change our location. We were initially booked for, uh, prom on a vote again, but that has changed. So, we're going to be at the Hyatt in, I believe, Huntington Beach. Um, regarding anything else, um, oh, we have, uh, late crew leaders being appointed at the moment. That's a system for, um, sophomores, juniors, and seniors where they get to help out with incoming freshmen, so the transition's smoother for that incoming class. And tonight is the first round for boys C I F volleyball. It's at seven. That's for sports. And that's, that's what's happening at L V H S at the moment.
Thank you so much. I think you guys are well tested. Um, our La Boa representative, Sarah?
Good morning, everybody. Um, well, La Boa is pleased to see that negotiations have been completed and we appreciate our administrators and our board members for all their help and their efforts in that whole process and throughout the year. Um, and for their continued support and acknowledgement of teachers and students as the fundamental, uh, focus of our school district. And teachers are looking forward to finishing the year strong, positive, and celebrating all of our students' successes as they move on. So, thank you all.
And our C S A representative, Elizabeth?
Good evening. Um, I also want to thank you for, we completed our negotiations as well. And, um, I have a bit of news to share. It's a Washington press release. Um, so, I'm going to read a short look here. It's on Wednesday, May eleventh, tomorrow. The White House will recognize twelve school support professionals from across the country as school support White House Champions of Change. These individuals are selected by the White House for their leadership and tireless work to ensure that students in our nation's schools receive the support and motivation they need to be successful. Educators, including school support professionals, often go above and beyond to meet all of the needs of students, so they can achieve success both inside and outside of the classroom. The White House is excited to honor and celebrate the incredible work of school support professionals who make up one-third of our nation's educational workforce. The program will feature remarks by senior advisor to the President Valerie Jarrett. The Champions of Change program was created as an opportunity for the White House to feature individuals doing extraordinary things to empower and inspire members of the communities. The event will be livestreamed on the White House website tomorrow, excuse me, uh, W W W dot whitehouse dot gov slash live slash. Um, it'll be two P M Eastern and, uh, I guess there's a hashtag W H C or W H chants. The reason I'm reading this is one of our very own Margaret Warder is in Washington, D.C. right now and she'll be proceeding the word tomorrow.
Do we have anyone from P T A tonight? School Power?
Okay, we covered it with Amy on the fund dates, but, um, I wanted to invite you all to come to the Three Clubs Barefoot Canyon Classic at the Ranch Monday. We're sold out for golf, but there's, uh, room still for dinner, which is eighty dollars a person. And you can sign up online tonight, lbsschoolpower.org and probably tomorrow, but don't tell anyone I told you that. Well, what time is that dinner? Just because there's a schoolwork effect, school effect. It's probably six-thirty.
Okay, any other organizations? Okay, board members. Kim?
Oh, wow, starting with me? Okay. Um, well, I did, went up to T O W and, uh, kudos to the P T A, um, for putting on the I Am Jazz, um, reading. The lady who wrote the book read it and there were, there were probably twenty-five parents and the same number of kids. Johnny was there and Anna, Ian, myself, Mr. Conlin. And it was, um, it was eye opening, um, and I'm glad I went. And so, I'm very happy that our P T A is so open-minded and, um, encouraging of all folks. Uh, so, I said, I'm glad I went to that. Uh, the administrators dinner last night was lovely. Uh, the food was actually good, so I was surprised. And Shereen, you did a great job.
Thank you.
And there were some, there were, it was just an interesting group. And again, I'd never been to one of those, so I'm, I'm glad I participated in that. Um, and just the other couple, two more things. Today, um, in the New York Times, there were two really interesting op-ed pieces. One was, um, about putting grit in its place, and I don't mean dirt. Um, it was, uh, how grit in schools isn't just about getting through and, you know, slogging it. It's finding what is intrinsically valuable to you and what you're willing to fight for. And how do, how do we instill that in our kids to help them find what in fact they love? Um, and so, I'll give that to put in our packet. And the title of it is, Guess Who's Taking Your Media Classes, um, in College? And it actually, um, said fifty, over fifty percent come from, uh, high and, um, upper-middle income, uh, school districts. And so, you know, what does that say? And again, it's just, it was just, it's just an interesting take on, um, what's going on out there and it's worth reading, so that's it.
Thank you so much. Dan?
Okay, um, well, yeah, and I haven't, uh, had any opportunities to attend things since our last meeting. I just, I went to the high school P T A and they did find a president and some other officers for their P T A, so they, uh, had a vote on that. And so, they were very pleased because they were, they were at a quite a big concern about having the leadership and being able to do that. And Bob Billy was there talking, that was just recently after the threat situation. So, he was talking, there was a, also some Thurston parents there and about that and what we do to keep students safe. And then also a number of opportunities for parents to go and hear speakers. They were not necessarily in our town, but in other towns on the issues that he's really passionate about. And it was, of course, it brings an alcohol, but prescription drugs. This was one of the big topics. They, uh, I went to the P T A council, of course, and they are wrapping up the year, but they were, they have been doing a lot of things, had a lot of reports. And Lisa was updating them on where we are with, with our personnel department, which is always, they always like to hear that. And, um, that's about all that I've done. I think it's, um, I have gone to a lot of the sports events. We are finishing up the year. Our student said that about the volleyball tonight. They're playing Hoover from Glendale. I'm not sure, it'll probably be over at seven-thirty. But, uh, we did host the prelims and finals for Orange Coast League Track and that's a big undertaking. And our, our coaches are really eager to take that and they always do a great job. And it's, and in that field, we do have a little more competition in the leagues. The girls won, the boys were second. And I know that we've done really, really well, so he didn't have to mention that. But it's really, they, we have some really powerful sports right now. I don't, they started River Side today or in the next little place, but that's.
Is that all about athletic scholarships, did they not?
Uh, I don't know about that. They were setting some records, so they were doing really well. And we have one that's, I think, a brother-sister. They're, they're, you know, brothers-in-law. So, they're both very strong. So, it's, it's a, a good finish to the year for them. And I know it's very, very busy at the high school. But there is a lot of testing. A lot of testing. And he, I didn't catch his dates, but we're having the principals back there. How many days was that for change of schedule? Did he say May twenty-third or June something?
It's June eighth, that's what I heard from the principal.
There'll be two weeks, uh, going to, um, a clock schedule to get through this all a bit and, and, uh, the following week we'll be finishing up with some of the English, that'll spill into the following year. But it's, uh, it's confined to the, uh, history class, the U S history class and the English, uh, junior English classes. The rest of the classes.
But everybody goes on that schedule?
Everybody goes on that schedule. Goes to all the classes. And, and when the juniors go, their U S history and their English will be taken there now and their English.
Okay, thank you.
My daughter had five A P tests and she put on her calendar the twelfth of May when it was over. It's the best day of my life. Little bit of testing, another good state test.
Let's see, well, we were talking about how wonderful our community is and contribu- in contributing and we're very excited that both Almoro, well, all three, Almoro, Top of the World, and Thurston all got accepted to go to the Berkeley Edible Garden Workshop, which is very competitive. And Mr. Conlin has helped a bit financially, Mr. Duddy helped financially, and the Laguna Beach Garden Club helped. And so, also, Dr. Meg from the San Juan Ecology Center is going as well as one from each school, like Penny Dressler from Thurston. And they have a fabulous curriculum that interweaves Common Core with science and, as well as environmental science too, and ecology and health and history and math and a whole set of growth six, seven, eight lessons, but also things for younger students too. It's been going on since nineteen ninety-five, I believe. And this was, we've tried before. This was the first time we were accepted, so it's very exciting. Lots of new lessons to bring, to bring back to our community and lots of people involved, whether they were raising money to fund three of the people or volunteering in the gardens or however. So, lots of people that don't have kids helping it.
Thank you, Karen.
Also attended the celebration last night for administrators and that was fun. Um, and it was, there was a running theme that no one reaches success without being mentored and being supported. And also talking about who they mentor and how they support others. Um, I think it's part of this humble profession. And, um, and that's about the kids. It's just, I know it's about the kids, but it's just, this is a word about them and it get teary-eyed and talk about the kids. So, it's like, it's, it's such a humble profession and I admire that you guys are in it and do it. And, um, sometimes it was a little long, but even that was just fine. Cause it was just, it was, they were, the people being honored felt so honored. They were so, and it, and it was almost magical, really. Cause I've been in that same place for many other things and it really was. They would, they had a little cement. And then except the common, but the warrior. And then, um, the other thing I've spent a lot of time, cause I have three kids in Laguna Tots. But Laguna Tots is at No Square Theater, it's not a school-sponsored activity, but it has forty little kids from first grade to eighth grade and then high school kids who work behind the scenes. And they, their opening song is about STEM and it's the Y M C A, but S T E M. And it is just, I was like, how did they get that in there? And, um, and I thought, oh, all STEM teachers and the science teachers, they would, they'd love it and laugh. And then funny ones about Common Core and musicians and, and being overscheduled and, you know, sports and being a kid and where's my future going?
Sure it's not all good, it takes a while.
It is, it's just made for the little ones, made for the little ones. And, um, and then there's original songs written by kids, which is, um, pretty amazing. And then kids playing musical instruments. And each year, the one thing that was neat to hear is the parents talking about how many more and more kids are playing musical instruments, where they have to beg or try to find one at that age, right? They have all these kids, they have to turn away. It's not a, you know, like, oh, come play my violin, my saxophone. The fact that they cannot play, it was very impressive. So, and they're, um, and they're again this weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and you will laugh. If you can get to get in there, you will laugh.
Thank you. Well, I also went to the Alaska dinner and, uh, we're all very proud. We have three board members and I think my wife had commented that, uh, what, two districts? We have, had eight board members. There we have three board members and I think my wife had commented that of what, two districts we had, had board members. Well, part of the reason was because Shereen would be honored for superintendent of the year, which we're all pleased to see her get that award. It's a great honor for her and a great honor for the district too, so we appreciate that. With that, Shereen, do you have any comments?
I would first of all like to thank the board members who were able to attend. It was another evening event and it was kind of a long event, but appreciate that you were there. It was an honor and a privilege, as I said, and it was fun to see many of my colleagues that I worked with and the colleagues I work with now who are so wonderful, those who are here at this table, those who are out in the audience who attended as well. Again, thank you for giving up an evening to be at that event. It was, it was really wonderful, a culmination of an entire career. And I know I would not have received that if I had not been here in Laguna Beach and was a part of the really wonderful dynamic that is, you know, drives us to really provide high-quality education that we do. We have supportive community, outstanding teachers, great classified staff, wonderful visionary leaders and a board that supports education wholeheartedly. So it was, it was very, it was very gratifying. And, you know, for a girl who came from this little tiny town in the mountains, it was so like, who would ever have thought that that would happen? Just crazy. I just want to comment on the AP testing. It's kind of funny because my husband's an AP teacher and boy, he couldn't wait either to tell the test. This last Friday, he teaches AP year, so he too was thrilled, although he didn't have to take five tests, which the junior year is so hard for kids. And I wanted to comment on one fun thing that we did today, one of the many fun things we do every day. But one fun thing was we went over to the high school and surprised Mindy Hawkins, who is recognized by the Orange County Department of Education as the PAL Program Advisor of the Year in Orange County. So it was really fun. We have the banner that just fell off the wall. We had a parade of administrators from the district, from the school. We had teachers, we had students. We must have had, I don't know, at least fifty people barged into the room where she was. She was in actually the ceramics room with the ceramics teacher and some of her students who are in the ceramics classroom. So it was very fun. She was very surprised. And of course, talk about humble, she epitomizes humble. So it was, it was very fun and it was just so, again, gratifying to see someone who's such an outstanding educator be honored that way. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Dean, yeah, some time.
Well, we'll be kind of breaking ground next week on our high school track and field project will begin. So we'll be closing that field. The update last time, I think with the benefit of worry, you got your update that the, with the work going on at Thurston related to the gas being shut off, the piping's all being ordered, so, and that's kind of going to be a couple of month project. And so after school, before school would be kind of problematic and we'd just be finishing when school ends. So rather than do that disruption and have metal plates over there that have to kind of go back and forth, we're going to delay that until summertime and then they can take care of it full-time at a lower cost as well.
Darlene.
Thank you. Very excited. Last night was a wonderful event and we had two full tables of people there to support, which was very exciting. And a wonderful, as you say, wonderful end to the career, another many things that you've accomplished at the time. The next week, the Orange County STEM Initiative, the ecosystem initiative begins. And that's a committee of about twelve of us, teachers and administrators, Jenny and Chris Studi are on it and a number of teachers. And we also have a Boys and Girls Club rep. We have somebody from Crystal Cove. We actually have about three people. And I think we have another organization that wants to join us in planning our STEM, developing a STEM plan and our rollout. So we're really excited about starting that. They're very, very picky that we come to every single training and meeting and that we really become a team. So it's going to be really interesting and really fun. We will be working with eight other districts that are involved in that initiative through the county office and both Orange County STEM. I wanted to compliment Amy Kernan tonight. She has really been working hard with the teachers on benchmark assessments. Where is she back there? She'll probably do it right now.
No.
And we've expanded. She has helped the teachers at the middle school expand our writing benchmarks that we had started in the elementary school two years ago, now to the middle school. So we're going to have some really solid data, data over time of our progress in writing. And we know that writing is a huge indicator of the student's success on the CASP test and just as critical thinkers overall. So we're really doing some great work and I really wanted to compliment her for that. Monday night, we start that adult ed class we've been working on for months and months. It will be an online curriculum and online assessments, which Johnny's been working really hard, Johnny and Yadi, to pull that together and work with Jeff Dipple to define the curriculum. So we will have our adult learners from the community. Right now, we have about fifteen folks committed to coming who will be kind of simultaneously learning about how to use computers at the same time as learning about English. So it's a really exciting program and Jeff's just rolling out all kinds of ideas about how he would like it to be, you know, a total virtual experience. But I said, we'll go a little slow, let our parents do their toll and we'll see what that looks like. But our, our teachers are really moving fast and looking at happening. Our expressions math that we've been piloting for a year and a half is on display at both elementary schools and here in the district office. For K five, we have a primary and an upper grade sample for parents to look at and offer any comments or feedback on. So we will be coming forward for the formal adoption to the board, I think, in end of May. That's it for me.
Thank you, Lisa.
Well, again, congratulations, Shereen. It was a pleasure to honor you at the celebration of excellence awards. Say we had the best nominee, but you know, no.
We did.
Definitely, we did. We've been really busy with negotiations and thanks to all of the folks who are involved in that. It's hard to be out of the classroom and it's hard to sit in a room racking your brain for full, long days. But it was time well spent, everyone was very well prepared. And I think we've spent less time this year than we have in the past. So it's become a very efficient process and very collaborative. So thank you to both of our associations for that. Again, I wanted to just comment on Mindy and the outstanding PAL advisor award. She's a pleasure to work with every day and it was funny because she was over here meeting with us. You know, we were talking about intense issues and she goes back out to her school site and she sends me a text of one of her students in the Jedi competition. And I'm like, you know what? That's what it's about. That's what just means so much. So I thanked her for sending that to me because it's, it's, just reminds us why we're here. And then also wanted to just say that we will honor Margaret for her White House Champions of Change Award at an upcoming board meeting. This is a really big deal. It's a national honor. They're trying to improve the recognition of classified employees. They have a similar award for, national award for teachers. This is a way for them to recognize the support staff. So it's very impressive that we have one of the six people in the entire nation that is honored for this award, so that's it.
Great, thank you so much. We'll move on to number twelve, which is the public hearing. And it is twenty minutes to seven. And we'd like to open the public hearing. I believe Dean is going to speak to this. Actually, Jeff, would you want to come forward? Do you want to say a little bit about the, we, did you, do you want to talk something before we go into public hearing? We can start with an earworm action. Okay, I can, I'll do those just a little bit, just get, just get it.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. This public hearing tonight is based on us completing residential developer justification study. We do have our consultant in the audience here to answer any technical questions. But essentially, we went back and there's a variety of factors that must be considered when you look at raising any sort of residential or commercial school fee, as it's called. We haven't done so since, I believe, two thousand or two thousand and two, which, when you look at the amount of development we have, it's very minimal and our student generation rate is very low. So while we're showing that there's a possibility to increase our developer fees for residential construction, it's nowhere close to what the maximum level one statutory fee would be, which I believe is three dollars and forty-seven cents. Versus the two dollars and eighty-six cents. Deb, do you have any questions or want to open the hearing?
No, I think this is a public hearing and obviously the agenda is very, you know, we have that.
Thank you. Any board comments or discussion? Any public comments or discussion? Hearing done, I'll make the, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, good evening.
I just wanted to identify yourself.
Tower Hills. Just wanted to comment that people in the community are very excited about the new superintendent coming on board. And I wanted to suggest that, I've talked to a lot of people and, you know, I want to suggest that, like, for example, on this item here concerning the facility fees and the increasing the fees for the people who are building homes, multi-dwelling or single, that the board consider not an absolute moratorium, but a very, very discreet process and discerning process on personnel, salaries, budgets, community relations, governance issues, so that we don't tie the hands of the new superintendent. Like, for example, I'd really like to know what he thinks about this. And I think it's really important that we don't set the new superintendent up for failure. And that we, you know, I was involved in the, there's something called the Office of the President-elect that happens every time there's going to be a change in administrations at the federal level. I was legal counsel to the Office of Senior Advisors in the Office of the President-elect in nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine. I learned a little bit about executive transition. And I think this is really important that the board slow down and make sure that, for example, particularly in the area of human resources, personnel decisions, senior staff, personnel matters, but also in broad policies like this and really even a procedural. I would like to know what the new superintendent, who, he went to Pepperdine and Leadership and he worked in the Irvine District and he worked in the great district down south. I'd like to know what he thinks about, for example, the procedure for this public hearing tonight. You know, the, a real public hearing is where the board notifies the public of how much the fees are now, how much has been raised in the last ten years or whatever, what it's been used for. And notifies the public of what the proposed increase is, how much it will cost for each new homeowner. I think it adds like eight thousand dollars or nine thousand dollars to the cost of building a house. But the thing about this is that what you do in a real public hearing is you, for example, would notify the, you know, you talk about the community coming together for school power and whatnot, which is interesting because a lot of communities have the same process we have with school power. It's wonderful, bringing the community together. But for example, to bring the community together here, you would invite the task bearers association. You would invite people that are against this, if there are any, or people that are for it. And you create a record of both the reasons for this. And one concern is we've just paid taxpayers money for this study. And the study says, the objective of the study is to provide a basis for your findings. In other words, we're paying somebody, we're paying somebody to tell.
I do want to extend you the courtesy of thirty seconds.
Thank you for that courtesy. It says that the objective of this study is to provide a rigorous basis for such findings. The objective of the study is to provide a basis for such finding. In other words, you've got these statutory findings and all you've done is hire somebody to tell you that you can do what the staff has recommended and you haven't done anything to find out, well, are there people that actually don't agree with these projections? Don't agree with these, the findings or the rigorous basis of finding? So I'm just saying that I'd like to see the board between now and the time that the new superintendent comes on board to show some restraint and go ahead of things like this. And let's find out what the new superintendent, what his approach to something like this would be.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this issue? Hearing done. This time, we're closed, closed the public hearing. It is now seven forty-eight. Six forty-eight, excuse me. Okay, we're going to move on to number thirteen, the consent calendar. Anyone on board should call at night on the consent calendar.
No, I just like a little bit of more information on it and it's not, I can ask these questions, it's going to be called.
Okay. Do they have that first or?
I need it, I need some more.
Okay.
Some of the second. No one else heard anything. Just, we have that in place currently and what we do using the same person means that. And do we do the hiring or we do the very?
The crossing guard company that we hire is the same one we employ. We actually have a multi-year agreement to keep those costs fixed and so we can renew it each year and accept that. You can terminate it anytime. It's shared at fifty percent with the city. And that's been the story of the practice of this. I think this is maybe the third or fourth year it's been in place.
Yeah, I think it's the third or the fourth. Actually, if we're going to, this just, this kind of goes back to Chris first of all too. If we're going to have people of our, our employees are going to speak from the eye, you need to come to the microphone so we can hear you on the recording. This, we put this into place in Norma's last year, I believe it was, so that'd be twenty twelve. So this is four years going on, five next year.
Mm-hmm. Four, four, it's great.
It's not always the same person. We've had two different crossing guards to make, going to work really well with them about what our needs are and how it's worth us giving them some of that. And that's true.
And we no longer use anybody, community parents or any volunteers?
No, we do, we have a striking dad, but they're in the parking lot and they help support.
Except for maybe in the backup on it, it sounded like you have this considered to be a real liability issue. And that's, is that only if they're off of the property?
The crossing guard is off the property. The striking dads are in our parking lot.
So that didn't apply to them?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. If that, that, I gotta say, it's a huge help. It's, it's.
I'm not, I'm not behind that. I just wanted to know.
But since I do wander that direction, it's really. I try to drive cars, I wouldn't do that job. Thank you, Jimmy.
All right, anything else to add to the session? Got approval of item thirteen A through O. Okay. Okay, moving on to number fourteen, the LBUSD Music Program. Darlene, Esther's just going to trot along this one.
So in keeping with our engagement of appreciating and recognizing our amazing community's support, I'd like to tell you a little bit about our progress and status of our music program and how it has been supported and grown over the past few years. I'd like to refer you once again to an article or a comment by Tom Pearl from the State Superintendent Schools. This was also part of the presentation that I gave on our arts education plan because it's absolutely relevant to the work that we've been doing with music. And that is that art education programs are vital to California's robust creative economy, our global competitiveness and to our school's ability to engage with our students. Further, he says, we know how high-quality arts education benefits our students. The arts help support lifelong learning. The arts give our students hands-on experiences, experiences with important twenty-first century skills. The arts help give students reasons to stay engaged with their studies and avoid dropping out of school. And there's a ton of data to support that. And obviously, that is well-recognized in our district and our community here in Luna Beach. The mission that we developed as a committee when we developed our arts education plan was that the Luna Beach Unified School District will provide exemplary arts education programs to ensure that every child participates in high-quality K-12 arts learning that leads to success in college, career and in the community in whatever field he or she pursues. And once again, the arts have proven to be a wonderful background for any job or career in the future. So they're a wonderful addition to any arts plan. This is a quote from John Mann. And this is a picture of the students at Carnegie Hall in twenty fifteen. It shows some evidence of the wonderful performances that our students engaged in, the invitations that they incur along the way. And John says, I firmly believe that an arts-rich education that crosses curricular boundaries of both the elementary and secondary level is a key element towards helping our students become twenty-percentual learners and prepared for the careers of the future. And he was kind of an excellent leader person on our community, and had a lot to say and add to the conversation. So I want to give you just a brief overview of how our programs have grown with this support and with this attention paid to our music program. We've added five sections of music over the past, since twenty twelve through twenty sixteen. And that has been extremely possible due to the support from school power, the school power endowment and the matching district funds at the same time. So a lot of community support for enriching and furthering our arts program. At Laguna Beach High School, we had guitar and ukulele and also AP music theory. At Thurston, we had two sections of band and a section of strings. The graph, the graph on the right is for secondary, so it's six through twelve. Will show you that the enrollment in music has run overtime. and that we are at a high point at this time, which is something to be said in a secondary program where students have choices, and some very difficult choices to make, some of the wonderful electors courses that we have available to our students. On our first page of our website, on the left-hand corner, you see the 100% vocal and instrumental music participation. And that is true of our elementary schools. 100% of our students are engaged and involved in music learning in the early grades. In TK through second grade, all students have chorus, and first musical instrument is the voice, and so that's a perfectly appropriate place to start. In third grade, students have a semester of chorus and a semester of strings in every quarter to learn some of the foundation and essential elements. In fourth and fifth grade, all students have the choice of chorus, strings, or band. That's a pretty comprehensive program for elementary students, and something to be congratulated. From 2011 through 2013, any of our instruments purchased, we have been able to purchase those instruments through the Nelson Trust Fund, along with school power and endowment funding. And that, those funds have been instrumental in helping us to really make sure that all of our students have quality instruments, so that they can produce and feel like they're part of a quality program. And again, 2013 through 16, we added a strings program to third through fifth grade to introduce our students even earlier and to start to build that skill toward a band in the high school. The next slide sort of demonstrates, whoop, too far, demonstrates the investment that has been made in our music programs. And the gift, again, the Nelson Trust gift was very substantial at $362,000. That's amazing. We will be expending those funds at the end of this year. And so the district will be paying up the continued renewal of instruments, but we're in a pretty good spot right now. 2011 through 12, endowment matched district funds by giving us that $33,000, call it $34,000. 2012 through 13, again, a base grant of, the school power gave $25,000 towards our program, particularly for strings, and endowment gave the $44,000. So pretty significant contributions that were matched by the district. And the same pattern was repeated to build our strings program all the way through 2016. That three-year agreement expires this year, and so again, the district has firmly developed a program, and we will now be supporting it financially from this point forward. And we want to thank those organizations, school power and Nelson Trust for supporting us and making it happen. So we will continue to promote our Arts Through the VAPo Visual Performing Arts Education Plan, and we will continue to commit the funding to support a high-quality music program.
Thank you.
So we are status.
Is it correct that we are required to supply the instruments? Was that part of that?
Say that again.
That we are required to supply the instruments. We can no longer-
Right, we are required to supply. If we have a program, we have to supply the instruments, absolutely.
And it's, it's, the school power grant was for how many years on the music?
Three.
Three.
I wanted to add to that, our band program, it has doubled and grown since 2011. And we now have 60 students in band, so that's a pretty significant accomplishment. That was actually the goal.
Is that the high school band?
Mm-hmm.
No, I'm trying to ask. But I think if you get that, I'm just killing you with it.
That's another topic for discussion, yes.
Well, it depends on who's running the zoo.
I think it is very hard for the students to choose, because they enjoy them so much. I, it's a testament to, you guys hire, and then program, and encouragement, and anyone can try and remember what their abilities are. Make which instruments if they're not getting on that one, and then switch again, right? So I mean, it really is an amazing program. I wonder if as they're moving up, do they buy their instruments as they get towards high school, or are they still?
At some point, did it buy their own?
Some of them do.
Yeah, I'm sure some do.
Especially the, you know, the young ones.
Well, they could, but they didn't have their own. But there's something, like there's certain instruments my son, because he plays in three of the bands, right? He really wants to own certain ones. So I don't know if that's kind of common among-
Just like some kids want to own their own technology and not have-
We have a cello and a couple of other things at home, you know, but then the- Sure, yeah.
So I'm just wondering, as, you know, the funds are funded.
But they're always supported. They will always have an instrument at school if they don't bring any. That was the thing.
I have, I'd give to say to Carol's point, the hires, I mean, they are real pipe pipers. And it is just so fun to watch, especially Rich, you know, for those little kids. I just think it's phenomenal. And so thank you, because it really, they really are the right people in the right workplaces.
They're doing a great job. Our music teachers are outstanding. They really are.
We have Robin Rudolph looking forward for a second to comment also. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something with the funding. You asked about the, like, the three years of strings funding.
In the prior year.
We're in the final year of that right now. The $25,000 that the school power side gives to music, it's not over.
Thank you.
You know, so there is continued support.
I just sort of avoided that part, John. I should have said that. Give me credit. Yes, thank you.
Um, Jennifer? I'm sorry. I just wondered, I know a while back, like, we had a trombone in our house. And I don't play, the best doesn't like, that we donated to Rich. I mean, is there a program where people, perhaps?
We tried that.
We did try that.
And it, it does not-
It's work.
Yeah.
Just didn't get enough instruments, and they weren't really usable. Mary Jenkins was very good with that. They had, thought it was, it sounded like a great idea.
Right.
But then it just, it just ends.
It's the same cause when we have technology donations. You know, they're older, they're, they need a certain repair, they're missing a certain part. It just can be more problematic for the teachers than starting.
But you know, people with good instruments in their closets and their closets, then by all means, we need, you know, lots of them.
He gave me a paper for a tax write-off.
Yes.
Oh, yes, donate out, yeah.
The district will do that.
Okay. And we are, we are continuing on a limited, that corrects?
Yes, absolutely.
I felt it was a concern coming from endowment that after that might get started, but then we would keep it going.
It started in 2011, and it's continuing. Thank you.
Sorry. Anything?
Good. Oh, what comments?
One point I wanted to make, it's already been made, and that is that it's really important that in addition to what the school has in terms of resources, the support of school power. And I kind of got jumbled when I was speaking a minute ago, because I'm trying to put too much in, too short of a period of time. But I've actually been, you know, you made the comment, Mr. President, that it's really unique and rare what we have here in this community, and it is, I'm not disagreeing with that. But what I'm, what I find amazing is I'm kind of doing a study of the school power counterparts in all the other school districts. And I'm finding that this is something that, while it's unique, what we experience here, it's happening in a lot of communities. And on the, in the area of music education, it's happening very strongly, I've discovered, in some of the other districts. And I just want to commend the Assistant Superintendent Messenger for this, for the report. And, you know, I remember when I was at the Good Beach High School, I was very involved in music with a lot of friends there. I had no talent, they did. But I found a quote in a book that I was reading, and I had a friend of mine who was an artist, a very good graphic artist, and we made a wall-sized quote of this, a wall-sized graphic representation of this quote. And it was, "Music washes away from the soul, the dust of everyday life." And I think that also, you know, I think that the importance of music in kids' education goes beyond just the aesthetic and the artistic experience. The role of music in brain development has been really well established. And you talk about common chord, you talk about math, you talk about stem, you talk about seam. The fact of the matter is, is that it's been well established that what happens to kids' brains. When my wife was pregnant, we used to play Beatles music for the baby inside, before the baby was born. But at any rate, I just wanted to commend this, because I think this is one of our strongest areas. And I also, while, before my time runs out, I just want to say that in the importance of arts, all the different kinds of arts, I was noticing these great, I just wanted to express my appreciation for these great paintings that are on the wall back here. I went for a midnight walk last night on the beach, and one of those paintings looks a lot like what I saw last night. But I just see, one of the things that really makes me happy when I visit campuses here is the vibrant scene and how alive and vital the arts are. And, you know, we used to hire the kids in the band to come down to Brook Street on Fourth of July and play music for the Fourth of July parade on Brook Street. And the participation of the bands of high schooler kids is also a great form of socialization. So I just wanted to commend you for that presentation. It's definitely informative.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anything comments? Okay, we're moving along to number 15, our monthly financial update. Mr. West?
So we have the financials as of April 30th. So we see there are property taxes, we have 90% of revenue in that area collected. We're on target to receive what we've had budgeted for this year. The rest of the report is, as of at this point in time, obviously we have two months left in the year for classified salaries, three months left in the year, except for the 10th. And the report is laid out in the same fashion you received the last two months' reports, no other changes in that. So questions?
More discussions? Questions? Got some public? Moving on then to number 16, Cal Card Visa Purchase Card. Mr. West also.
I'd like to call for Minnesota to kind of talk about it, since they got the project we have in the Cal Cards.
Sure.
Great, thank you. Good evening. Tonight, the business department is going to bring an information item on the Cal Cards, a Visa Purchase Card. And just to bring a little bit of background, about a year ago, when we landed the payroll and accounts payable positions, and we have two people doing the same job, we decided to start having weekly meetings. And looking at really procedures and processes, strengths of the departments, and areas that we really need to work on to be more efficient. And what we started having discussions about really involves the time and the quantity of employee reimbursements. And so during these conversations, we were figuring out the length of time we were processing certain employee reimbursements, and we figured there's got to be something better, or it needs to be a better way. And lo and behold, boom, Cal Cards came to light. And so the theme that we'd like to talk a little bit about is, so what is a Cal Card? So a Cal Card is very similar to a Visa Purchase Card. It is similar to what you carry in your pocket. It has your name on it. It has the same safeguards with liability and fraud protection. But what it is, it's a little bit more specific. So it is preloaded with a designated amount, and it is by category. So the business department would go in there and actually assign categories that would be approved for purchases. And so with this, it provides flexibility for the cardholder and flexibility to the business department. So specifically, the benefits that we wanted to look at is the employee benefits. Obviously, there would not be an out-of-pocket expenditure. The employee would be able to obtain only goods and services when convenient, but also there would be no paperwork following up. For us in the business office, we really see that this would be a streamlined, efficient procedure for us. So we would be reducing the number of accounts that purchase orders and purchase racks in the system, and that would, again, reduce the number of checks issued. It's an internet-based management system, so at any time, I could go on there, anybody in our business department could go on there and actually track and monitor the expenditures, very similar to how you would track and monitor your own Visa personal card. This also allows some safeguards. So when we go to create the, and give the approval for the purchasing on the card, we actually designate what is an approved purchase. So just for an example, if I was to have a teacher that was receiving money, a pre-approved card for, say, a science account or science class, then there would be an allowance for maybe a grocery store, knowing that the lab might entail some grocery items. However, if I have another employee, maybe in the tech department, there wouldn't have that type of flexibility. So they'd have some safeguards built in, so based upon the individual who's receiving the card. So how we see this being used is, again, our special teacher grants are our highest amount of out-of-pocket expenditures. So it's our largest amount of employee reimbursements. And we would like to see that as something that we would consider bringing forward to the board, consider allowing our teachers to use these prepaid Visa cards. It could be used for pre-approved travel. So if we know, for example, Thurston is going to a school-to-watch conference, we could issue Cal Cards to our teachers. It's loaded for the expenditure, it's loaded with the category, it reduces the out-of-pocket, it also reduces the paperwork coming back. I can go online really quickly and see what expenditures were actually in alignment with that, with the approval process. So that would eliminate the procedure of going back and reissuing the check. And eventually, we would like to see administrators and administrative assistants, similar to what the flexibility is right now with those that have our Wells Fargo revolving card. We'd like to be able to use that flexibility with this system as well. And so just to kind of put it in perspective, this is what the procedure looks like for the business office when we actually have an employee reimbursement. So for example, let's take our typical teacher, receives a school power award grant. They have been given notification, they have money to spend. Typically, they go and they send it, they have to find, keep their receipt, they turn out receipt in for reimbursement with a pre-approved form that's created by the business department, they get it signed by their supervisor. The supervisor then sends it down to the business office, our CBO signs it, sends it to accounts payable. Accounts payable now is ready to process. And we're about a good week to two weeks, sometimes three weeks, if our employees have lost those receipts and can't find them, we need for a statement to come through, we need a justification to be administered as well. Now our accounts payable department has it. They are going to wait until they have enough to batch, which is usually every day. They're processing a certain amount of invoices every day. They send it through the Orange County Department of Ed system, which is our Bytek or Stoner system, and they ask for distribution. The distribution then goes to me, and I go ahead and prove it based upon the information and the backup that's provided. Again, going through the county system, then I authorize county to issue the check. County issues the check, it comes back to the business office, and we disperse it to the teacher, to the employee. It is a cycle. Best-case scenario is two weeks. We had employee reimbursements that could go four weeks, six weeks. And it's, what we're finding, the greatest amount of time is to people that goes with it. And so something that we're looking forward to doing is being efficient, being progressive with our teachers and our employees, our classified stuff, to make sure that they have the tools necessary, because they're being awarded the amount of money to make their job more efficient, and this process we believe would allow that. So to kind of tidy up, this is kind of the process we're at. Right now, we're in step one. We're in investigation. We're bringing in an information item to the board. We're talking about creating procedures and policies in our weekly meeting so that we have a set policy when we go to issue these Cal Cards. And we are actually in contact with US Bank, which is the one that we would be working with collaboratively through this Cal Card process. And the next step would be bring it back to the board and ask for authorization to go ahead and be in a resolution with the US Bank on these cards. And we would then at that time really elaborate more on the safeguards that would be in place, and give the analysis of the spending limits that would be on the cards themselves. And then we would start the business office training. So we would be prepared to hit the ground running, fully ready for our implementation, where we'd go out and train staff as needed. We would create the procedures and policies, which is some of the documentation that would get our teachers to be, or our staff to be aware of when they're receiving these cards, some of the safeguards that are in place. And then we would be distributing, hopefully move forward with a more efficient process for all of our employees. Yeah. Those are our Cal Card presentations. So with that, if you have any preliminary questions?
The questions that I, I did ask, when Shannon had this small school power meeting, oh, I sat down after you and Kada, that they were, she was proposing this idea for the teacher grants, because the money gets granted, and that could expedite that process for the teachers to be able to make their purchases. And she referenced the other credit cards that we currently have, and that was misinformation to me. So that was, I hadn't followed up yet, but that's one of the questions that I asked her yesterday and today, and she gave me very complete answers very quickly. So we have three current employees that have credit cards. And Jack, just as we mentioned with something earlier, I just think it's really important that we really, that we as workers really know that kind of information, and that's occurring in the district. I think it's important. And that's just because there have been past times when that hasn't functioned well. So my questions regarding this, if we do start this, I would like to start very small, like just with the teacher grants, and see how it works. With the ones that we have currently, and tie with the next one, because you mentioned that you can go, you will look at it online. So that, to me, that's then the verification and the justification process, part of the process that validates that- So that to me, that's then the verification and the justification process, part of the process that validates that the correct expenditures are being made.
Correct.
So, but they don't have to submit a receipt to get reimbursed, but someone will be making sure that there isn't issues.
Correct.
Okay, that, and are they issued for periods of time that are shorter than a year?
We have flexibility with that, so we could issue for just a trip and issue it for maybe a thirty-day travel.
Obviously, the teacher grants.
We can issue them for a year or longer extended.
Because they don't, all the same teachers don't get the grant, so it would end them.
Correct. Yes, we can put an end date.
But we can reload those as well.
We can reload as well.
So there's a process that continually, school powers coming about with an award here, and you know, annually, at least for teachers. So those cards wouldn't have to be redistributed and reissued.
Like Starbucks card. So right now, how, how is it, right now with the one you have, how does that monitor?
Right now, with the cards that we have out, they are a typical credit card. So there's no limit on credit cards and it is in their possession.
So you get a monthly statement or what?
Yes, just like a typical.
That comes to you?
Uh, yes, it goes to the business department.
And then you check it to see what.
Yes, we reconcile it. We have the backup documentation, because right now, the employees are expected to return the receipts that access the actual, each transaction. Has it as an actual document that's backed up with it.
So you're not doing that online at this time of year?
We're not doing that online.
And I have to say, I like that, because it's just another level of, I mean, if I were auditing, I would want to make sure, because I mean, when you get your credit card statement, it says Amazon. Okay, well, I don't know what that was, you know, so how do you then know that what was bought and purchased at Amazon is the appropriate, it wasn't, you know?
So for the CalCard, it will be by categories, so for example, you're.
So like your object codes?
Basically, are the object codes. And so for example, Amazon, if we have technology, they would have object codes in technology, or they'd have equipment, they'd have software, they'd have for sure travel and reimbursements. But those categories would show up, for example, might be a software renewal, or it might be a small equipment purchase, go into those transactions.
You'll be able to actually see what it is, it's not just Amazon.
Correct.
You'll be able to actually see what those things were.
And the only thing we won't see is if on your receipt, we won't see the receipt itself, what we see is the transaction category. And so if, for example, I'm saying technology is allowed to have an expenditure at Amazon under equipment, materials and supplies, those are the only categories that the card will be accepted under.
That's still broad, yeah, I mean, that's, so I look at those for some, and I'm, I mean, you can't know what it is.
Yeah, I just, it's still. Receipts.
Well, so we had a discussion about this, and I just want to point out, we have three credit cards in the whole district. And if you go to any other large school district, every principal has a credit card.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Now, yes, could they use it for something inappropriate?
I don't know that, I mean, I don't know.
But there are certainly levels of review on stuff like that, sure that if they did that, it would not be, would not bode well for them, so.
Yeah, I don't, yeah. I'm just thinking more, I'm just thinking.
It's hard, though, because we're small, we're, we're changing.
Responsible, yeah, you're responsible to make like the rest of the money. Yeah, but that's a matter of, because I still write checks, good lord, I am so.
I do.
So do I, the likes of credit cards.
But even EDD now, they pay, they pay unemployment benefits, the state just believe in the credit card.
Right.
They charge it up for the email, just for the.
But those companies make mistakes, because when you're teaching your young people how, about using a credit card, you need to teach them, or at least I think you need to teach them how that they reconcile it, because they may be charged for something that they didn't purchase, because mistakes get made. So that's even just one aspect of it, when you mention that guy using a grocery store, see, that concerns me, that's really broad and not to, I know people are hearing me say this and think they don't trust anybody, though, but I see that my responsibility here is to make sure we have enough checks and balances in place, that there is the temptation then to buy your dinner.
Correct.
I mean, it's, you know, it's not, I'll use that in my science class, but, you know, it's, I want to make it so that that, so that we eliminate that possibility.
Well, can't they also submit then back, they're just paying attention, but they'll have a receipt and they could submit the receipt back as part of the responsibility of having the card. So you actually have a receipt on file as a check bounce.
We, we can.
We custom seem like.
They didn't, right now, we were assuming that the process would be more efficient, so they didn't have to. Is the requirement, though, or the suggestion from CalCard, from US Bank, that the employee keep their receipts for their own verification?
Okay, so, oh, okay. Okay.
But can they send you a copy of the receipt, in a sense of, they're not waiting for money to come back, because they're not spending their money, but they could send a copy of the receipt in, just so that you had a copy of the receipt on file to make sure that it wasn't dinner, but it was the oranges for the science class for some experiment, or whatever it was, that, especially in those very broad categories. On travel, it makes it easier, because for travel, if you have a certain amount of pretty, and you can spend, and if you're gonna, you could always split a car, like I'm having, the district will not pay for it.
We've already split it, right.
Right, so it's like, in there, but I'd say that you could do that easily, and first you can track it, but in the grants, it could be so broad, that that could be something that could be helpful to make sure.
Just make sure. What is, what is the cost to us?
No cost to us.
How can that possibly be?
Because we will plan to pay off our credit cards as they come.
So, so they, they're just gonna say, we love having your business and not, we're not, and we're not making any.
I think they charge their business, they charge their business.
Well, they're making way.
Like you, like you said, you get a no cost credit card, and you have available for a credit card, it's the same way, the vendors are, the vendors pay.
Yeah, so they're trying, yes, yeah.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure.
There's money being made by some of those.
But that's a point, that's a point, because it.
Because I was seventy-five dollar a year Alaska card, and.
You say, yeah, I would feel interested to school credit anything that you, yeah, I'm doing this.
There is a rebate rewards program through this. It is very similar to what we have through Wells Fargo right now, where it's points, we could use it either for a reimbursement, like a cash reimbursement, not so much, oh, you have three credit cards. We can use it to purchase gift cards, for employee recognition if we so choose, but there's, there is a reward system in place. We haven't investigated in terms of what we are identifying as that is the basis for, what we would like to use it for. It would still be part of our discussions through the business department is which would we like, how would we like to use rewards?
How much does that, what would that help to, in the idea?
They're saying maybe one to three percent, depending upon which direction we want to move, either with the reimbursement through the gift cards, would be a higher percentage, or with some straight cash packets marked with one percent. And then just, just last thing, and Jenny, we kind of corresponded by email. I did reach out to US Bank, and I had the question of what about the categories, how specific can we be the categories? Right now, they don't have the ability to show the transactions per se as like an item number, like I went to Best Buy, I bought this DVD. They're looking to research in the next two to three months, when that technology would become available to actually see the actual receipts.
That would be, that would be, that would be ideal.
So that's still the investigation piece that we're moving forth, that they are working on, or this is still something new for them through districts for us.
So they understand that, obviously, a lot of people have these concerns.
They, they love that. Correct.
And then you would, we would get an actual report on this?
Oh, yes.
Come along, remember the business reports?
We would include this as part of our statements. So again, tonight's just an information item, so that we could continue with these conversations, we hope that we look forward to it as much as we do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Moving number seventeen, does the president have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say with respect to the credit card, the research being done, the credit card. I had experience in this field as general counsel of federal agency that had a hundred and twenty million dollar operating budget, oversaw programs of about fifteen billion dollars a year in government credit appropriations, operated in a hundred and thirty countries and had staff traveling all over the world. And we worked with credit card companies, and actually we found that, and I, Clerk Vickers, I would commend you for your questions, I thought they were very good. We actually found that you could increase accountability and increase auditability if you work with a credit card vendor and have them tailor the program and its characteristics, so the consumers have expressed about receipts and whatnot. If you have a creative vendor who is working with you, and they really do want your business bad enough, they can help you devise custom tailored systems so that you have the level of confidence that you need. And I, and so I would encourage that the vendor be put to the task, put to the test of addressing these questions that were raised tonight, so that you end up not doing this and worrying about it. You in fact could have a higher level of confidence than you can have over your existing system, if you've got a vendor that's creative and doing their job. And I also just wanted to say that one of the things that we found is that the credit card was most important for what would be referred to here as classified employees. That, you know, the senior executive people that are making a lot of money, whatnot, it's nice to them to have a credit card. But what we found is that, you know, the people that are lower in the pay scale had, it was more of an impact on them to be spending their own money on things and whatnot. And so I would think it would be very important, I don't know what your current practice is in terms of what classified employees are allowed to do in terms of getting reimbursements and whatnot, but I would encourage that you build into this program some recognition of the potential efficacy of the credit card program for classified employees. And lastly, since I mentioned classified employees, I just want to say that I was at a lot of White House ceremonies of the kind that the head of our union is going to be attending tomorrow, and I gotta tell you, this is really a big deal. This is something that, I mean, we like to blow our own whenever we're doing good, this is something that should get real attention, because it's extremely significant that she was selected out of everybody in the country and that the focus is on the classified employees. And so I think that should be, if we're gonna tune our arms or whatever, this would be the time to do it, because I think it's very significant.
Thank you, Ms. Gil, any other comment? Okay, let's move on to number seventeen, energy conservation project presentation, Mr. West.
So this is gonna go ahead and lead us through this agenda. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board that have had with me up here tonight, Mark Starkey and Schneider Electric, though I feel very confident I can present every detail of this project because we've worked on it since May. I did want Mark to be here as our expert, and Mark and I have worked very closely together since October fourteenth, the day after the board approved the investment grade audit contract. And what we're gonna present to you tonight is our findings. And so we end with, talking about how we got to this point, we, like I mentioned, back in May, issued a request for proposal that would look at our district and identify energy efficiency upgrades. It was a very competitive selection process, we had a lot of great firms submit. And between the scoring matrix and the interviews, I think our whole team felt confident that in choosing Schneider Electric, we made the best choice for our school district, based on their experience, their value and qualifications of the team members that they brought. Since that time, we've been looking at a lot of our lighting and a lot of our mechanical systems, for two areas that we're really focused with their investment grade audit. We rely on data from not just our individual sidewalks and investigations, but looking back at our large facility condition assessment, the five hundred and eighty-seven page assessment of our district, as well as site feedback and walking with our maintenance technicians to talk about where the trouble areas lie each year with regards to our lighting, but more quickly with that of the mechanical systems. Our district has nearly six thousand lights, so the majority of those are interior, but there is about seven hundred of those that are exterior. Currently, most of those lights are fluorescents or CFLs. We do have a variety of types of the CFLs, we have T twelve's, T eights, and we don't have T fives. Now, I'll explain what that means later, I just like saying it now, so I can feel more of an expert than I probably even know. We spend roughly three to five thousand dollars a year on lighting replacements, so that's the bulbs and the ballast. Those go out fairly frequently, the bulbs go out more frequently than the ballast. Interesting note on the T twelve's is they are pretty much obsolete, you can't get them anymore, so about a third of our high schools still has T twelve's, so we would have to go through and retrofit those anyway. And what we've been doing is mostly going to the T eights. So the way that works is it's by size. T twelve's is twelve eighths of an inch, T eights is one inch, and T fives and below obviously are smaller. The smaller the bulb, the more efficient and brighter it is. So a T eight is more efficient than a T twelve, a T five more efficient than a T eight. And then, of course, there's LEDs. LEDs and T fives are very similar in terms of cost, LEDs are just more efficient. If you can see my graphic there, it explains that. So whenever you hear us talking about T twelve, T eights, really that just has to do with the size of the diameter of the cylinder of the, of the bulb itself.
So T twelve for twelve eighths, T eight for eight eighths, and T five for five eighths.
Exactly. Five eighths.
I'm getting distracted.
So when we compare LED lights to the efficiency of those fluorescent tubes and CFLs that we have, LEDs use roughly seventy-one percent less energy than T twelve's. They use roughly thirty percent less energy than T eights, which is what we most commonly have. And I think one of the more important things that we found in our research is that LEDs do not emit any non-visible light spectrum light. And those non-visible lights like UVs, which are emitted from the T eights, have been shown to for significant eye strain and fatigue of the eyes, which I think is why we get a lot of those studies that relate LED lighting to enhanced test scores. Because there's a study, and we found this, that when students were exposed to the more natural daylight, or daylight that is mimicked via the LEDs, they had upwards of twenty-six percent higher test scores, and that was a twenty thousand student study between nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand and two. So the cost to replace all of the lights, and I think one of the things that, when we looked at our cost estimate, and we have our facilities master plan, where we looked and we had roughly over six point five million dollars for all lighting in all mechanical districts wide. I think one of the things that, that pricing was pulled from our facility condition assessment, assuming a like-for-like replacement. So in some cases, that was a T eight for a T eight, and in some cases, that was a T twelve for a T eight, because we can't get the T twelve's anymore. LED lighting, just because of the nature of it, is more expensive than a like-for-like replacement. So when you look at the average cost for replacing all of the six thousand lights, it's about five hundred and twenty-five dollars per fixture. That's a fairly good price, in my last school district, we did a little over five thousand lights and it was about six hundred and twenty dollars per fixture. Some of that's gonna be because the cost of LEDs have come down over the last few years, but I think that kind of balances out with, there's a lot of new Title Twenty Four restrictions, or you're not just able to do a simple light replacement of one.
Yeah, to put that perspective, is that a light fixture you're talking about, something that big, or is it something smaller, like a little can lights over here?
This, this, well, balance out, because that's an average, so that's your gymnasium lights with some of the, we don't have that many small can lights, but yeah, you're gonna get a lot of the, the four by, or two by four lights, that would be a fixture, which would have maybe four bolts or six bolts in it. So, yeah, that's perfect for that, also includes the wiring and electrical components as well, not just the fixture itself on replacement. You can see it's about three point one five million to replace it. And then when we looked at our mechanical components, we looked at all the units that had basically reached end of useful life, which would be two thousand and two and older. In the, all the units beyond two thousand and two, or moderately aged, we looked at what sort of commissioning or repairs we could make to make them operate more efficiently and extend their useful life. So one of the areas we also want to highlight on this is that at the high school, if you remember, we received a lot of feedback about adding cooling to the theater and the gymnasium, the theater primarily, because we're using it for testing now, and if you know, testing on a hot day, it can be very uncomfortable. And the gymnasium, for the large events, it was very hard because the ventilation system wasn't working very well, and you get a lot of bodies in there on a warm day and it's very hot quickly. So we were able to include that in the scope, and you'll see those costs here shortly. So the scope at LBHS, per the investment grade audit, the IGA, was replace the seven mechanical units, and that's basically in the eighties classrooms. So it would take all remaining units off that boiler and pump system, which would allow us to remove the boiler and pumps and free up more storage. Right now, it takes up about, I'd say, three hundred square feet in that room. Add destratification fans at both gyms, and I'll show you what those are on the next slide. Add cooling at Duggar and Artist Theater and the weight room. Replace electrical panel in North Gym in the theater. And test and repair the condensate lines in the twenties, thirties, and eighties buildings, that's where we had a lot of the leaks that occurred in the beginning of the school years, because the condensate lines weren't designed or installed properly. At Thurston, it would be to replace, they had twenty-six mechanical units older than two thousand and two. Add destratification fan at the gym, modify the controls at Duckworth in fifty-one hundred and fifty-one oh three. And again, just to be sure, test all the condensate lines and make repair of the unit. So that is a destratification fan, it's basically a large fan designed for gymnasium applications, it's totally silent. And when you put it in a gym without air conditioning, it's shown to reduce the temperatures by ten degrees. So on moderately hot days, you do not need to turn the air conditioning on, so let's say an eighty-degree day, you can. So let's say an eighty-degree day, you can keep the gym at a comfortable temperature with it, just the fan. But on hotter days, in conjunction, when it runs with the AC, it's actually gonna allow the air conditioning to operate much more efficiently because it's able to displace the air more evenly and keep it cooler longer. So the air conditioner won't have to run as long. At El Moro, we looked at, in the two-story classroom building, you cannot access the current mechanical systems. They're actually, the panels to get to the units is about twelve inches wide, and the mechanical unit itself is about four feet wide. So it would be adding new ventilation, or not ventilation, new access panels to get to all of the units. We can do the improvements. And then modify and repair the mechanical systems in the counselor kitchen and PE offices. District office, replace all eleven mechanical units. That does include the school power building as well. It just says district offices, but we also looked at the school power building. In that top of the world, we have thirty-four mechanical units. Some ventilation and cooling required in the custodial room, which is also where they keep the kiln because it gets very hot and there's no ventilation or air conditioning. And we have a broken ventilation fan at the lift station. It's minor, we won't include it in there because it's required. And we have a thirty-two kilowatt solar array system on the roof. So the two thousand and three thousand building at the top of the world. Some of the inverters have just gone bad, but it's about that time where they should have gone bad by this point. So in replacing them, we'll bring that back online. And you'd see later in the presentation that that would start generating us more savings again, about seventy-two hundred dollars, I believe, a year. So the total cost of mechanical scope, if we did all of it, would be about five point seven million. So if we total all of the findings based on what we looked at in that investment grade audit, you're looking at a total of about eight point eight million dollars. But we've also already committed and invested sixty thousand dollars to complete this audit. So we wanna show what the full project would be, and that's about eight point eight five million dollars. When we look at it in the facilities office, what we wanna do is make sure where are we getting the best value. And that's why I always like to break out the hard costs versus soft costs. And the soft costs for this project, given the complexity and all being modernization, is totally in line with what we would expect for something like this. One thing that's included in their soft costs, it goes into about thirty-five percent, which we normally would pay ourselves as the DSA submission fees. But in this case, that would be something that Schneider took on. So I think we're getting a really good value when you look at the hard versus soft costs in this project. And as I mentioned earlier, we had six point five million identified in our lighting and mechanical upgrades. So as we, and I talked about the like-for-like versus doing the enhanced upgrade, like the LED light for replacing our mechanical units, we didn't just assume replacing with a similar efficiency, but a much more efficient unit. So we throw in the additional cooling that's proposed at the gym, Artist Theater, and the weight room. There's a large portion of why there's a discrepancy in what our facility condition assessment cost estimate is versus what we're coming up with as part of this project. Because we're looking at enhancements. We don't wanna go like-for-like. Given the benefits that have been demonstrated with LED lighting, not just in energy efficiency, but on student performance and comfort and test boards, we feel like we can make that investment within our existing budget and potentially phase this project over time so that we're not having to commit to the full project cost now, but accomplish as much as we can and get the most bang for our buck over the next few years. So the total difference between what we have budgeted and what the total project would cost today is about two point four million dollars. What we would look to do at the next meeting is come back with a construction contract that does not go beyond what the already approved or accounted for budget is. And you can see in our proposal, we looked at district-wide LED lighting as being a priority because it does have the quickest and most impactful result for our schools, both in lowering the energy costs and improving our student learning environment. Doing the mechanical systems at Logan Beach High School in Thurston, because they are larger sites, they, just by that nature, have more mechanical issues than the other sites. Having some minor mechanical work on more on top of the world. But also something that we thought would be important is getting those, it's a fairly small investment to get those solars to come back fully operational. And there's potential not just for the solar to bring us savings, but also reclassify S and R utility rate to a renewable rate. Renewable rate, thank you. That would, just by that alone, would lower our utility bill. So there's potential for greater savings than we even show in here. So when you look at what our ongoing annual savings would be from doing this project now, even if we came back with the six point five million dollar project budget, most of these savings, in fact, I think all of the savings assumed, is in the lighting. So we would propose that being in that first phase anyway. So a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in electric bills annually, and three thousand dollars, and I took the lowest numbers here, three thousand in not replacing the lights and ballast. So it's very conservative. This doesn't assume any escalation rates in electric bills, which a lot of times when you do these projects, the vendors will let to say there's gonna be a two to a six percent increase year-over-year in electricity costs. We're not assuming any of that in these numbers. We're saying a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars year-over-year from bill to bill. One-time grants and rebates, again, they're conservative, but there's, Southern California Edison has a customized rebate that we can use for our lighting that would generate about forty-five thousand dollars that we can contribute towards the project. And then Proposition Thirty-nine, we are currently estimating about five hundred thousand dollars to complete the work. I would like to say we do have the Energy Expenditure Plan ready for submission to the state. That was part of the investment grade audit scope. So we will be getting approval for that anyway, regardless, but it's something that we had assumed as part of the project. And within that six point five, that would not take our project budget to seven million. We're saying that's contributing to that six point five. So in summary, Schneider and us have worked very hard, completed the investment grade audit. Feel like we've really identified a very detailed, thorough scope of work that would benefit us not just in terms of operationally, not having any issues mechanically, but also enhancing and improving our sites via LEDs and having more mechanical units where we replace them. We already had about six point five million included in the master plan that was approved last year and again, rolled over into this year. We would stay within that budget, and we'd bring back the construction contract at the next board meeting for approval, emphasizing that the lighting be included no matter what because it's a district-wide benefit. Every school would benefit from that. And then we worked within the mechanical scopes to see how much we could accomplish everywhere, but certainly still including the gymnasium cooling and the theater cooling. And just because we wouldn't be able to do all of this at once, this is a very large project. It's a lot of work. And it's going to take a few years for this alone. And as we phase that over time, this gives us the flexibility to see where we're at in next year or following year, the year after, to potentially complete a phase two or phase through, or phase three to uniformly complete this plan. But it does provide us flexibility. So by not doing it all once, doesn't mean we won't ever get to it. We just wanna make sure we stay within the budget that had already been assigned.
Just to be clear, so the six point five million for what you're proposing for phase one could still take a couple of years?
Yes, it is certainly over two fiscal years at least.
Okay.
Because we have limited time. A lot of this work is gonna require DSA approval. And then the lights have to be done during non-school hours.
That's, that's why I was.
And Mark's team is very well-versed in this, that they do primarily schoolwork. And so this is something they're used to. And yeah, we won't, we won't need to rush them like some of your clients, right? So we've got such a good deal.
How much of it would be DSA, require DSA approval?
Some of the mechanical work will, because we're replacing multiple units with maybe a single unit. But certainly the Artist Theater, the H VAC in the Artist Theater, and the gymnasium because of their structural components to that.
El Moro?
El Moro would require.
Is that partly because of the age of the facilities?
I'm sorry?
Is that partly because of the age of the facilities? And then, so there delays there with DSA?
Just in engineering design and approval, but a lot of it is, there's a lot of work to be done, period. So we still have the crews to run way through. Especially with all the activity we have in our schools, there's some are low. It would be hard to really hit the ground running.
I, would you consider solar it first?
I, I think solar is a good idea. I think that the most important thing we can do is tackle all the low-hanging fruit first so that you don't oversize or over-design whatever solar system you're putting on your school. I think if we maximize how much energy we don't use, then you can cheaply or less costly design a system that would cover that portion.
So it's not off the table entirely, just because our whole neighborhood has solar? Because we actually get sun, you know, more often than you do down here. And so I was just wondering that. So at some point, we could consider.
Well, I'm always more than happy to consider anything. I just think what we're doing right now is so important and so vital to energy efficiency and operational efficiency.
And just what you did in the office there at Thurston is huge.
Sure, there are more ups.
That, it's, it's like, I walked in there, I was like, what changed? I mean, it couldn't decide was paint, or they moved the furniture, or what?
Combination?
It was crazy. Right now, we still are, Thurston heat the water. Why do you do that?
We have electric water heater.
Well, I just wanted to add a couple of comments in the meanwhile, although we certainly said that we're gonna prioritize lighting. It seems like lighting in the classroom would be number one. If there in fact is a study that shows it improves grades, test scores, or whatever it proves, I don't know if the phrase is wrong, but if that study is even half true, I would start there. That would be my perspective. And the second thing that's very important to me is air conditioning in the Artist Theater and the gym. Because a situation we had last year where it got so hot, and they did the ACT testing, SAT testing, the kids were squelching there. And then to fix it, they put fans in and blowing the test off the desk. And that's not a criticism, but the height, they had to do something because it was like ungodly hot that day. Seems like things might be getting hotter. So I think that Artist Theater, it sounds almost frivolous, all these years they didn't have air conditioning. It actually is a, and with every building, building in this district being so small, all buildings are multi-purpose. Building, we're not saying it's a library, it's only used for books, not even used for books they were. But that to me, I think, with the lighting in the classroom, if I was going, if I was thinking it, I want that top priority, and I want that air conditioning in Artist Theater and the gym top priority because they're used for community events, they're used for the college fair, they're used for testing.
That, you just said that.
That's what he said, but I just wanted to reemphasize it doesn't get lost somewhere in the process that if we have to do one thing in front of the other, the air conditioning in the R C R might be something to start on quickly, especially since there's a DSA approval. I gotta get it moving.
Dean, would any of this come out for, or is this all?
Yeah, the much of mechanical replacements are out for, so lighting, electrical roofing, all those kind of stuff goes for, goes in there.
Okay.
The LEDs, since it's a, it's an improvement, we may consider moving that piece over to like the C I E program. But it all could come under for, there's not really a problem. And I think if we look to, it has a twenty-year, you know, funding program and we have funds in to do this. So it's really the pace, what's the appropriate pace for us to scale out this project?
Is LED meant by code, by the way? If you're building a new school, would you use LED by code that you have to, or is it?
I think Title twenty-four pretty much forces you to.
That's what I thought, because I was doing some homework modeling and they told me I actually didn't have a choice. On a day where they didn't have a choice. So it's very interesting. So it's time to get us, yeah, moving up. Any other comments, questions? All the comments, questions?
My pleasure.
Thank you.
No one? Okay, let's move on to number eighteen. These are action items. Number eighteen is an approval of Resolution number sixteen dash oh four in order of by, by anyone.
By anyone.
By anyone. And trust the election and specifications, Dr. Schneider.
This is simply a resolution so that the school district can have an election this November. It's time for our biennial election, and we have two seats that will be up for election. And so we need to pass this resolution in order to notify the county superintendent of schools that in fact we are having this election and to consolidate it with other items on the ballots so that we can do it as efficiently and cost-effectively as possible.
Will it be verbal?
Just, thank you. Any discussion of?
And notice it did, not on the resolution, but you, I didn't see on the resolution. It included a statement on the candidate statements, and I thought that we decided that we'd want this sent to nation.
I thought we did. I thought we decided.
I thought we decided four hundred words.
It's in our policy. I didn't look at the policy to see if it was in there.
It was, I don't know. We had, I remember having this discussion, we decided to test it, but I thought that that changed, I mean, I thought it was too horrific to let you. So I just wanted to check.
No, we filed with the county, and when we made the change, we had to file with them, and that's what it is until.
So it's for every election. Okay, thank you. New subject, no. Yeah, I remember, I remember it, I just.
Any other discussion, public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving to number nineteen, approval of educator effectiveness, state grant expenditure plan.
Thank you. We brought the plan forward to you in October. What we were planning to do with it, this is a three-year grant from the state of California for the implementation of the Common Core state standards in a total of two hundred and forty thousand and four hundred and twenty-two dollars. So for tonight's meeting, we ask that you approve our expenditure plan, which is on the second page. And that is expending all of those funds this year, mostly for coaches, our site coaches at the secondary, who have a section each, and for part of Dustin Gowan, our K five coach. And this, you can see the breakdown, this is for partial pieces of their salary. Instructional coaches and support coaches for teachers is a research-based strategy that yields incredible results for teachers. And while it may take some time for those coaches to be fully accepted in all the classrooms, this will be an initiative that will have high payoff for all of us and for our students. And so this is, you can see that we have planned to extend all of the funds this first year and then to continue on with our other professional development initiatives.
Will it be verbal? Second?
Discuss.
There's no problem with spending it all in the first year?
No, it was a pretty open-ended grant. You could use it for textbooks, you could use it for personnel. Coaches was one of the specifically named strategies, and also materials coaches and other professional developers.
So if there was a site off this grant again, it would be not tracked and topped with rumors?
Right, right. Well, Mickey talked about the possibility of more funding. We're waiting for it.
Another discussion, public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving to number twenty, approval of single plans for students' achievement, S P S A.
Amy's going to come up and tell you a little bit about the process that we developed to align our single school plan with the LCAP. And I want to say also that Amy put the LCAP together and we received nothing but kudos from the county office today. From there, phenomenal was the word they used.
Yes.
Wow.
Hi, good evening, President Lanzito and board members. I submitted for you last week during the update copies of each one of the school's single plans for student achievement. Basically, this process, all schools that receive federal funding have to create S P S As, or single plans for student achievement. And we have aligned those plans with our district LCAP so that they follow the same structure of goals that we have for our LCAP to provide consistency across the district. And also make sure that those plans are able to provide input for our LCAP. So the school advisory councils, made up of teachers, other staff members, parents, and the administrators from each one of the schools get together and they actually use the template. They use data. The high school used an incredible amount of data on their, on their S P S A. And they look at what their needs are, what their strengths are, and they determine how they're going to align their own school goals and actions to our district goals. And then they came on, I believe it was March fourteenth, to our LCAP advisor group, and they presented their S P S As. And then utilized the information from their S P S As to create our actions and our expenditures for our district-wide LCAP. So it allowed our LCAP to have a lot of site-based stakeholder input and really reflect what was going on at each one of the sites and what. and what the priorities, um, and areas of strength and, and, um, and goal areas were at each one of the site. Which I think made our, uh, made our LCAP much more comprehensive and much more reflective of, uh, of what our district is actually doing.
Then, one question. Should we move approval?
Is it approval, sir?
No. Were these, not the final, just kind of a draft?
This is a draft for your approval. Um, the SPSAs need to be board approved. And so they received feedback when they presented them at our, um, LCAP advisory committee. Then they took those back to their school sites and their school stakeholder groups and revised them. And then are now presenting a final draft for, for your approval.
Well, I, I just caught some ears and I didn't bring my, my thing, but you know, where it said there were two teachers involved, maybe there was only one. But I did notice on the Elmore one, there were a lot of people involved who aren't there, like Dr. Jamie Parsons, she doesn't work here anymore. There was a teacher that retired a while ago, so I.
Most of the plans are three-year plans and so some of the people involved may have been involved last year and we, just like our LCAP, we extended the plans over three years.
Or the.
Uh, and so the, the plans were started and we aligned them with the LCAP last year. Uh, but they do go over a, a three-year period, just like the LCAP does. And so some of those people may have been involved at the start of that one and then are, are going.
At the very beginning, not last, this person wasn't even there last year, maybe a year or two.
I, I can take a look at any, yeah.
She was here last year.
Ja- Ms. Jamie Parsons was here last year. She, uh, she moved over the summer.
Oh, it was over the summer, okay.
Yeah, so she, she was involved and she was a part of their school advisory council last year.
Right.
Um, and so in, in the creation of some of those action steps over that three-year period, she would have been involved in that.
Okay, and then do they have somebody else take over when people weren't there or?
Each year they would replace members of their school advisory council, um, who left. And so someone would have taken, uh, Jamie's place.
Jamie's place and I, I noticed Hannah Hoberby's name was on there and I know she retired.
So those.
People would have taken those places and maybe you just would have let them in there.
So those places would have been. Yeah, would have been replaced.
But we, we can take a look at the plans, create better clarity there. If it's confusing, we should, we can sit down, these are graphs, we can, we can work on.
Yeah, see.
I thought, I thought maybe it was a draft.
Yeah, yeah, right now they're still graphs.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, but I do want to thank the principals and you and everyone involved, I mean, so many people involved, um, in this. And reading through it, we could tell that they're really being LCAP together and focusing students. So thank, thank you and thanks to everyone. Thanks to the principals, some dedicated.
The advisory council did agree.
And, and, and those that are no longer here and worked on this, and those that are still here, because all of us.
Yeah, it's a compliment.
Shall we bring those back to the next meeting with final, um, edits or approval?
Does that give, does that give you enough time?
Yes, but we, we don't actually, um, we have the public hearing for the LCAP on June 14th.
Well, I mean, it's a, it's a.
Whichever, that first June board meeting is. And then, uh, we have final approval for the LCAP on the 28th, which is the last one. I know the date is out, I guess it's the 14th.
Would it make sense to approve the three and then just look at the ones so that next year we can expedite the process? Did you notice any others?
Right, and, and like I was saying, if, if it can be people from the past that are on there, then it doesn't matter.
So conceptionally, you approve it.
I just thought it was a current thing that the numbers, like the ones where the numbers didn't add up, I thought. But if that's not a big deal, we can approve it.
But we can look at that definitely for next year to make it more clear.
Other comments? Public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving now to number 21.
Thank you, Amy.
Yeah, that's it.
Were you approval beginning here?
We did.
We did approval.
We did, I'm sorry.
Great.
We're gonna keep going.
This is approval of instructional minutes and bell schedules for Laguna Beach Unified School and District Cardi.
Thank you, Amy, again, it is, this is one of her areas of responsibility to ensure that we are meeting the state required minutes and she can tell you about that.
So in your packet, um, we have the draft, uh, instructional minutes for each one of the schools. However, the high school, I have a revision to add.
Please tell me it's bigger time.
They're very small. They come off of a, a spreadsheet that is a template from the state.
Tell the state that board members are older than they think they are.
But I can blow it up next time. The change for Laguna Beach High School was, um, a minimum day on December 23rd was approved. Uh, they had already kind of gone through and created their minutes and left that minimum day off. Uh, so we went and we added that minimum day in. And then we had to adjust the minutes a little bit to make sure that we were, um, with that extra minimum day leading the, the minimum requirement of minutes for this date. And if you look at the bottom, if you split really hard, look at the bottom of each one. Uh, where it says we're in compliance, we are in compliance at all four of our schools with the minutes and all grade levels. So we're good.
We're close to high school.
We're close, we're close.
We, we pushed it over the top. We did fine.
And those minutes actually went up the year before last because we had the, um, the reduced minutes, uh, that, that were required by the state. Uh, then just were increased back to 180 days from 175. So, um, so even with the more required minutes that we have now, we're, we're, um, we're good.
Much more approval, second? I'm sure there's snow days.
Yes, yeah, they might have snow days.
How did we do?
Make up.
No, they did not always.
They, they said even minutes they made up. I don't think we did.
Well, we did.
We have to make it up now if we have to stay. Unless we know we were from the state.
I think we're good. Well, we, it don't really have the turf, so we did. They closed the schools for the reasons. They had that a couple of years ago, we're looking for the fire. Well, we did there, for the fires.
Other discussion, if you'd like any public comment? I think so, all in favor? Now we're moving to number 22, approval of board policy, second reading. Um, we can do this one by one, all at once, I don't think they're controversial.
I don't believe, we didn't change it back to the last meeting.
Motion?
Some of it. Second?
More discussion? Public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 23, approval of resolution number 16 dash 05 of Laguna Education at Laguna Beach Unified School and District to adjust statutory school fees imposed on new residential development projects from $2.05 to $2.86 set up for student education from 17 to 6th of Mr. West.
Yes, uh, Mr. Biggs is going to take us through this, he worked with consultants on the, uh, study and. Thank you, Mr. West.
Mr. President, there was a board, thank you for allowing me to present this item. Larry Purichat here from Delink Group is our consultant to prepare the study for us. I've actually worked with Larry in the past when I was at Irvine Unified and his firm is, uh, included an expert in the field of these studies. Hopeful that any questions we have, we answer, especially specific to our study. Um, Larry's got over 13 years doing these, he does about 13, or I'm sorry, 75 studies a year for districts, uh, throughout the state of California. One area that I just want to mention from our perspective is, uh, developer fees, the use of them is very specific. Um, a couple of example projects that we are working on now that we allow the use of developer fees would be the, uh, top-of-the-world CLC portable replacement in music rooms, as well as the Thurston additions we have in, I believe in 2017, 18. And then any of the proposed classroom additions that we have from architectural master plans. Although they weren't part of our tenure plan, those are the types of things that we'd want to use, um, for our developer fees. So anything related to student growth, classroom, uh, or student needs in terms of educational space. The current rate that we charge is $2.05 per square foot. Uh, after going through the calculations in the study and the variety of information it gave us that Delink Group collected, they were able to identify and justify $2.86 a square foot. What that would mean, just to put it in perspective, is if we were building a new home or adding on to an existing home of 2,500 square feet. Currently, we would collect $5,125 in developer fees. If the rate were to increase, we'd collect $7,150 in developer fees. So that's a difference of about $2,025, um, which doesn't seem like a lot, but for us, it's, uh, every dollar counts because these are restricted facility dollars and it helps us accomplish the facility goals and needs of the district for our students and not constantly require general fund dollars to be flowing in. With that, um, I'll leave it.
I was, oh, we get in connection with the approval, just a second. The, the idea though, is if you're making it bigger, you potentially have more children or could have more children to attend to the schools. And that's the purpose of the.
You or any future homeowner.
Or future homeowner, okay.
And there has been, if you, level 5 law, there's a justification of Laguna Beach going on where there'll be a house that was originally 1,100 square feet. It sells, nobody moves in, all of a sudden the stakes come up, it's 4,000 square foot, now the, the cottage, now it's a family home, letting version out of the school. So to me, this is a relatively modest increase in fees and helps. These people who are coming in to contribute, I think they would love to, to be education here. And, uh, I think it's a, a pretty modest.
It's one of the things that attracts people to the community after all.
Well, yeah.
It is new.
Great schools cause a crisis in the value of the property, there's no question, direct correlation between those things, so.
I had a lot of questions on this and I shared some of them and then I got some answers back and I did some more of my, my research. Because I, we've had this before, I mean, we've had, and we've had developments that have impacted schools most significantly. And Soviet A O was one of them before Coast, and those were mitigated beyond just adult issues and worst of the kinds of impact. But, and now in my neighborhood, it's very different. In my neighborhood, those, what you need to describe that somehow becomes basically a second vacation home. And you very seldom see, uh, any students in our neighborhood. So different parts of town has different impacts. What concerned me, I don't, I supported hiring this study to, to justify this because we hadn't raised it in, um, those, not that number of years.
How many years did it spend?
I don't know, earlier it said 2,000.
2016.
So.
But I'm, I'm sorry, when was the fourth, last time we raised?
Uh-huh. So we haven't kept pace. I mean, it's been a lot of times when we didn't raise lunch prices or we didn't raise a bus fee and then all of a sudden you're trying to make up a big gap. Uh, so it is a, it's, it is a relatively modest increase. And I know our income to developer fees has dropped significantly when we were having, uh, the more construction, it was definitely a, a long-term component. And it's, it is restrictive. I mean, it's supposed to be, I mean, it would be impacted by having an increase in student. Didn't we pay for the driveway and Elmore with developer fees? As. At least part of, yeah, the funding, looking at different funding sources. I, I just had some real questions and actually, I got very comfortable when I read the justification reasons because I didn't see it matching after our community and that's what I asked. And I did send some later information in yesterday, the city's general plan, if you weigh through all of it, seems to identify around, and for that city, not of course our boundary, about 265 potential, I think I forgot to write in the residences. Because, uh, in part of what I was inquiring about today, a, a study of what looks like identified lots in this district, or in our city, doesn't identify how buildable those lots are. And if the costs are prohibitive to, if the city will approve it, then to make it buildable. And so some of them, they're on a map as potential lot, but they would never, uh, come to fruition. So that's what the city's general plan looks at, as far as what actually is, um, potential. So I just, I don't have a problem with justifying it. To me, it's not, I mean, we can justify it in my mind, the fact that we haven't raised it and it's not, it's a modest increase. But I, I just thought that that, the potential with that many future building units was, couldn't, could not happen here. I don't see where, when we were doing Newport Coast, it was like, that's a development, there won't be another development, like that's just no space. So it would be many good homes and they're just, as far as new development, there aren't that many. And the other part is I was uncomfortable with putting in the potential of 20 to 1. I think that this becomes, it is a public document and that just, we haven't discussed that. And I can't see a, I mean, I was not supporting doing that at Rosa High School because we can't, I don't think we could sustain the price of staffing. No, even if we could fill up our campuses with buildings and pay for those, I'm not sure at all we could sustain an increase in staffing if it goes 20 to 1. We haven't even done it before. So I don't know where we go with that because I, I'm not opposed to increasing the fee, but I'm not comfortable with the premises that are put forth in as far as they apply to our, just.
I think we reworded the resolution in a facilities committee meeting, a couple of board members on the staff committee.
I believe we, we essentially start the process over where we do the public notice again twice before a public hearing and then have to go to action. But we can, this is not something, if we don't take action tonight, we wouldn't be able to do another meeting where we could future action. But I would, I, I did talk to Larry about those specific questions today and Larry, do you mind, do you want to have addressing that?
Thank you, Jeff members of the board. Um, as far as the number of units, the, the study uses the Southern California Association of Governments, uh, regional transportation planning documents to identify the potential for the number of units. Um, those are obviously done at a 30,000-foot level, if you will. But they're looking to do major transportation planning for the region. And so they divvy out development as they see fit. So that's, you know, probably a more aggressive, um, amount of development than the city might say. You know, and it's somewhere probably in between the two numbers is what you'll see over, over the long run. The 21 class size, again, that's just a, a potential that you may go to in the future. And, and the study is basically saying that if you do go to that at some point in the future, that the, the seats would be reserved first for the students from existing residential development. Um, you wouldn't be giving a credit to the students from new construction within the school district. So you're really preserving that asset for the existing community. Uh, you're not committing with the study to going to 21, it's just a, if it ever were to happen, you've reserved that capacity for your existing community. So those are the, that's, that's, thank you.
So if, if the population doesn't increase, that we, we still would get the funds if we voted for this, is what you're saying?
We get the funds anyway.
But if, I mean, if, if the, if the school population doesn't increase, we would still get the 280 instead of the 250.
Right, so it would generate maybe as much as if there were more houses that were built or expanded, that would generate more, um, fees. But with a, a lower number of houses that the city projects or that actually happens, we would apply this fee. And that's, that's the, the money that we will get, whatever.
And it's not even as much building new house.
As much as remodels, tear downs, like we're going to the fire.
Yes, right.
It goes, it's 50% of it.
Yes, it will, yeah. And we will get, I mean, for any of those remodels or tear downs, if somebody's been there for years, their taxes are $400 a month and we tear it down and build some $2 million thing, we're going to get, what, $20,000 a year taxes?
Well, we don't get it.
Or that, our, we get, we, not, we get a portion of that, we're going to get a lot more from that.
That is true.
Right, than we are from this, so we're kind of.
Well, unless you tear it completely down, that represents a new home, but if you're just not tearing it completely down.
Anything over 500 square feet.
But let me add a little bit of that.
Well, no, you can, you can develop 50%, you can develop and change your home and then there's a value added to it based on what you added. So if you added $400,000, there's only $400,000 added. And that's why people leave up walls or some of the structures of the building. Uh, we have a neighbor who tore it down to the ground and they're building new. And I got to ask them about the fee, would it have done anything, they're like, no. And actually didn't even understand the sort of gain, the fee was incentive to give to the schools. But they did it because they, and they ended with a third kid and they, they didn't have room. And they're thousands square foot house and they owe him $4,200.
So let me, let me add something to this, the increase in property values is, number one, it happens whether you change the house or not. But if you change the house, it relates to valuation, that goes into the general fund. These fees are specific to facilities that are in the cause by them having the bigger house with more kids. Now we have to put them in a classroom that we don't have money from, from the general fund. Classroom funding doesn't come from the general fund. It has to come from school bonds, fellow rules, which we don't have.
Right.
Or this little bit of, this little bit of.
Classroom, I'm, for security, is that correct, for the?
So, yeah, and it, it's, it's, there's three primary funding sources for school facilities. One of them doesn't really exist anymore, but you have the state school matching bonds, school facility program, developer fees, and then local bonds. Um, so, because we're already teetering upon not potentially having the state bonds, although it will be on. So because we're already teetering upon not potentially having the state bonds, although it will be on the ballot.
It is on the, and if that, if that passes, it will not affect us.
I hope so. I, I'm updating our eligibility so that all of the, so for example, as we've gone through the process for the CLC portable replacements, there's modernization eligibility there that we'd be able to tap into, these will all be retroactive reimbursements from the state. But as you look to Thurston with the classroom addition, replacing portables with permanent building, the portables are not funded through the state program, has been a practice in the past and because the bond is just a continuance of the old school facility program, we are absolutely trying to get in line and try to capture as much of that funding as possible. So it's just a matter of making sure we're eligible, which I'm pretty certain we are.
Well, I agree, I don't feel badly about asking for more because costs are more now, but I was very uncomfortable with the projections of the number of students that would be coming. I just didn't think that was realistic at all.
Well, I think, as Larry mentioned, it's more about ensuring that the prioritization is on the kids and homes currently here today, not the potential new builds later.
I didn't read it that way, I mean, I, I did not read that.
I do want to remind you guys too of this demographic studies, which started when I came on the school board and uniformly wrong, saying going down when in fact we're going up and up and up.
With the expanded studies, twenty dollars.
And now you guys say, well, we're gonna level off, well, we're not leveling off yet and maybe we will.
We have.
Maybe, well, I don't want to be leveled off, I haven't seen it.
Well, it looks like we had room for about four hundred more students with that additional building. And so that would, I get four hundred's quite a few, I don't know where they're gonna put them.
But the high school, I don't think we put additional students.
Yeah, right, so my.
My number says there's classes at thirty-two now.
But we're getting.
You know, AP classes and stuff.
Our lower enrollments coming up through the elementary at this point, lower elementary.
What is that, they share the, is that PT council meetings or what, from shared that regard?
Yes.
Yes, they have a huge drop coming next year, and the recent is great, and they have right now seventy-five from eighteen, or they have one hundred and forty-five.
So that's also in the high school, a little bit upper, like eighth grade, but yeah.
Yeah, my perspective is that regardless of whether you, what, and role of the list, if you grow a program, and you have to add a couple of music programs, get you added these, these additional programs, you add science, you make your space. You know, you add, you add, keep adding a program that needs more classrooms. Right now, we have four million dollars in classrooms on the books to build and we have less than five hundred thousand dollars in developer fees. So that tells you a little bit that, you know, we're not going to be, have enough developer fees to do the new classrooms that we have planned. And so the question is, do you want in ten years from now to have more of those dollars from that new livable space to go to work as classrooms or would you rather not do that? How does that answer?
And what that means that it has to come somewhere, so we're gonna do the general.
Yes, but, but you're talking program change, program change is something different to me than accommodating new students. It's a choice that we're making to change programs, right? I just.
Yeah, that's, it's reality, that's more.
And I would say though, except in the case of special education, because you're gonna have much fewer special ed kids in a, a full-size classroom than you would a traditional classroom. So as special ed population grows and you have those classrooms with ten students and you keep adding every time, you get an increase of the ten special ed students, a need for another classroom, you're like, just that naturally reducing the capacity of that school. So you, you only have so many rooms now. That's one of the things that we are seeing and I think it's been seen statewide.
And that's fine, I mean, but for that point, then I would want, because I know a lot of our students go to programs in other districts because we can't provide those programs because we don't have students in any specific need, disability or whatever the gap is. And we did bring some back, we brought the preschool class back, but other than students that are at, at a functioning level, we included. That I, because I'm just, I mean, I know I'm a thorn in your side on this, but that's the kind of question I would ask, I would wanna see the data. Because I know it's increased, but I'm not sure that we're housing it here. And that proportionally would be, so this is my.
Can we separate the two maybe? Can we have the approval of this and then follow up with the data that you're requesting?
Well, no, that's not the, my problem with this is, is my. I think Jen thinks the data is faulty, basically, because it's.
That's doubtful, I'm trying to make.
Well, that's because, because, because what you'll say is, well, this is the last time, and I'm gonna go, the data's faulty.
Let's pick this out, the data default will stipulate, did the cost go up in ten years? Do we have more funds to hit, do we have more funds than ten years ago?
But you're proving it, you're telling us, so, see, I, I'm not.
Should we go as low, or hold off despite your face?
I, see, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, like.
I got to say, I used to hear that when I got sent to my work.
Yeah? No, I'm telling you, doesn't make sense, say, you know, there, there's no reaching cost.
But I, no, 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 I, I'm a hundred, I'm a hundred percent in favor of this. I understand though the hesitation, I think Dee probably has similar hesitation because they do feel that the underlying data is faulty. Now, how you change that, because you're the professional and you do this for a living, I mean, would you just go in and change the numbers to make people happy? I mean, how does that, or would we have to resubmit for a new study? Because I would like to get this done, frankly, I mean, I wanna, I, I think we should raise the, the developer fees. Because I think it's gonna be a minimal amount into the, but I do remember building that driveway at Almorel with developer fees. And I felt like, I mean, that, and that was, that came out of the blue, oh my gosh, we have to do something and boom, it was there.
We get it.
The amount that we had to help to this kind of way down. Way down, exactly, but at least we had it and so we add incrementally to the, the bottom line. I see, I see that as a, as a, a plus. However, being sympathetic to your concerns, don't give me that.
So the consultant is ready to vouch for it.
Well, I do like that. I, I mean, to the extent the board has concerns about the study, we certainly would want to make sure you're satisfied with the document and what's contained. So if there are things that you'd like us to go back and, and look at, we will certainly do that. And, you know, we can restart the process in terms of the public notification if that's the direction of the board.
And you're just saying that the timing is advertise, public hearing and board approval at the same time with the preliminary and then start at the block when you actually change the fee.
Right, so there's a ten day public review period prior to the board meeting at which you hold the public hearing and adopt the fees. And there was a notice in the newspaper ten days prior to the public hearing and a second one five days later. And then after the board takes action to approve the fees, there's a sixty day waiting period after that for the fee to go into effect. So if you approved it tonight, it would be July before it would go into effect. So, you know, any delays, then push just the effective date back.
Well, but the, the community would see that, from reading it, it looks like it's based on a lot of new homes and new students. And we're not really thinking that we want it, but not based on it.
Because the American selling is what the city has in their general plan, which is from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-one. I know yours, yours are more than that, then if we could have numbers separately, a lot of that or more information on where the potential is. And then if, if, I would not put in the twenty to one for at least for Thurston and the high school, I wouldn't put it in at all.
I would, I would not, I would leave that, that, that I would leave out, just any sort of.
Do you need to have a target report or is that?
If you need a target, I would do twenty-seven.
A target class size?
No, no, it's, you were, you were saying in one of the reports, like, do we need to put in a, a class size amount? I don't know, we can, we can work on that.
Do you have to redo it to just leave out that paragraph? Because I didn't read it that way, I just read it as data, not.
Not fact.
Yeah.
Or not, 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 not.
This is what we're going to do, this is what is going to happen, it's. Right. Right, this is tis data, them gathering data and how they apply it to school districts, not.
Right.
Not necessarily our district and what ours is.
I think the, I think the sticky point is it does stipulate, we need each.
It does, it says twenty, it says twenty.
It does, it does.
I didn't, I didn't read it, I didn't read it that way, no. I read it right now. But can, can you just leave that paragraph out that talks about twenty to one? I guess we're talking about the student population up here as a whole, you're showing the district here, you're talking about again at the whole, and just take out the twenty to one or just take out the, or is, or is that?
There's a different nuance we can take on it, what we basically need to do is identify that there's, while there may be excess capacity in the schools today, there's a reason why that capacity may not be available for students from new development. And so to the extent that, that there is another argument that can be made, we will make that other argument.
Program, programmatically.
Yes.
So we could, so we could use that, that would be.
Future educational needs.
Yeah, that would be a functional argument then.
Yes, as long as it's a well-reasoned, not arbitrary or capricious argument, we can certainly get it.
I think, I appreciate that program, I mean, yeah, should we, should we choose to, any, yeah.
Unpersuasive.
Unpersuasive program changes.
Not unpersuasive, well, second program changes.
So we're, does that mean that we'll bring it back at another time and re-advertise and re, uh, redo everything, right?
Will you get that before the next meeting?
No, because.
Yeah, the meeting.
They have to do all that process.
But it could be, it could be the first June meeting.
There's no urgency to it, it's just a matter of.
Well, you know, who knows, this is now, we're live stream, baby. People might be wanting to redo their houses and are just gonna rush right out. Well, three years to decide on two, I think you say.
They're gonna bust a play.
Good boys, good boys.
I'm not even talking about trees. Jeff, thank you.
So do you want to take it off?
Uh, do we table it, is that what we do? Then we had a motion to approve.
We had a motion to approve.
We table, a tabling motion perhaps.
So, so move to table to a future.
I believe it does.
They create your.
Your agenda.
Yes, that's okay. Wes, do you want to move a specific motion because it's gonna give something a lot of. Okay, so maybe.
So perhaps you could just vote against it.
Just to vote against it or move, or.
Well, we bring it back as a, we'll bring it back amended, maybe we're, so that's still tabling, right?
Well.
Table in the item because it's going to be amended.
Amended?
Can you do that?
Or should we just vote against it and then bring it back?
What's cleaner?
Whatever you guys want.
It was all cool, but I'm tired.
That's not.
Because we don't do that very often, but.
We don't do it a lot and.
Someone makes a motion to table.
In, in, in my, if you're, if you're tabling it to bring it back to discuss the same thing, that's a table. But you're bringing back an amended motion and I don't think we need to table that.
I think you.
Okay, so who should get to vote against?
Because you're not supporting this particular.
Can you kill it? Can I withdraw my motion? So I could move approval to not approve this one, this meeting.
Well, not against your agenda, I second it, so.
Okay, kill the main motion, I move that the motion be postponed indefinitely.
Thank you.
And I think you have.
A little comment?
Yeah, you know, I, there's just several things have been said that I just want to comment on. You know, back when you did the ten-year facility plan and you moved the money out of the Fund Seventeen into the building fund, you know, talked about the fact that we needed to use that money for the CLC and now we're talking about using the CLC, paying for the CLC with the facilities, I mean, the fundraise from the, from these fees. So I guess it's a combination of both, but you know, if you, back then, when we read the documents that staff prepared, it said that using a very conservative standard, they're not projecting population growth. And the board president at that time said the same thing he said tonight, which is that regardless of what they're being told, he thinks that there's gonna be an increase in student population. Well, that, if you read that staff paper that was done back there when you were doing the ten-year facility plan, it said basically, it was, it was, it was making a presumption in favor of the possibility of increase of growth and still finding that there wasn't gonna be any. And so now we're here tonight and I think from the community point of view, you know, we're, we just did the bond and did the field a few years ago. Now, what are we doing in the field? We identified big problems with the baseball field that have never been addressed after a lot of hoopla about it a couple of years ago. And the thing about it is, I think there's credibility, you know, when you talk about, well, let's take this paragraph out of this. You know, this, this report, I think the board clerk on this Vickers asked some good questions. When she talks about, what about the city approval process? This report is saying that there's gonna be twenty-three hundred, two thousand three hundred new single-family dwellings. Forget the multi-family, which I think there's a better chance of those increasing than the single family. But this is saying there's gonna be two thousand three hundred single-family and the, the average is supposed to be three thousand feet. You go try and get a three thousand foot new single-family dwelling through the design and view board and I'll pay you, you know, you, you need to become a consultant if you can get a three thousand foot. And so these projections are way off and the, the, you were talking about when they fix up a house that's a property and then they expand it. In this context, that's not the future of new units, that's called reconstruction and that's accounted for in here. But the fact of the matter is, their projections about, about new future units come from the data based on, that those are based on data provided by the Southern California Association of Governments, approximately three thousand five hundred. You know, what is the Association of Governments and what does it know about the actual demographics of Laguna Beach? And so I just think there's a lot of stuff that the new superintendent should be asked to evaluate and review before we go forward with this because I think you're in a situation where between, that we have to redo the ba, the football field, there's still baseball field problems and, and, and that we took the money out of the rainy day fund for the ten-year plan and now we're gonna do this. You know, I just think that this stuff needs to be a lot more coherent, coherently presented before we commit to additional revenues, particularly without participation of the tax curbs association or anyone else in the so-called public hearing.
Any else?
And so I have last breath.
What was it, you're, you're clear?
Wait, do we vote?
No.
Do we need to vote?
We don't need to.
We, you didn't vote.
Oh, we didn't need to, okay, so we took it.
Yeah.
What did you say on that, sorry?
Well, there's eleven choices in here, but I think the one, well, not, I mean, it's, it's, we have a list, it's in our, the thing is, we found a notebook and there is one that says to kill the main motion, so you, I move that the motion be postponed indefinitely.
Okay.
But there is, I mean, there are other, there is a tabling.
But that looks good.
But the problem with the tabling is that we will re, bring back, revise reference.
Difference, right.
Kill this one, yeah.
We still vote on it and it still takes some ability.
But we need a second for that killing.
You need a second, so.
Second, Dee.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
I was hoping, yeah, I.
You can vote opposed.
I do.
Like, what are you gonna say then?
Well, let me just justify why I did this until you all think I'm just being contradictory. This to me is form over substance, I, I know the report might be flawed, but all we're doing is going back and rewriting out of what is best for the board to say something that is slightly different and then prove the same thing. I don't see any point in this, this to me is just something like, you know, I'm number one out of the four of the disagreeing. Can I vote to do a jerk? Okay.
I was, I, I'm in line with you, I don't want to spend the money.
And it's a, it's a free to vote, it's a free to vote, so speak up.
Yeah, it's not a big deal, it's just a shame, it's the more money, bring it back, the same result's gonna happen. I hate to see money wasted, I've said this over and over again, the money should go to the kids, not to consultants or reports, even if they're wrong. All right, I would give my votes.
Thanks, Wes. Thank you.